Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, Tim.
Thank you. Funny how she knew that voice was it.
Okay, so, uh, once again, I guess, maybe hopefully for the last time.
Make a motion to-
To wave reading of the remote meeting.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. And Marilyn, didn't you remember second that?
Oh, yes, thank you for reminding me. For my EDS type of thing.
Marilyn second that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing on roll call vote, Kevin.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Norm, aye. Okay, uh, first thing, on the agenda, reorganization of the board.
Make a motion to Norm, uh, Chair, second.
Okay, are there any further nominations? No, no. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, do you wanna take it?
I'll take it, it's maybe my last year. I'll go for election next year.
Dick said that once too.
Yeah, well-
Then there was a couple guys named Vinnie and Jerome that came visiting.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. Okay, uh, hearing no other discussion, uh, once again, roll call vote, we've got a little different order, Tim.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Norm, aye, I guess we vote for myself.
Sure.
Okay, uh, taking nominations for Vice Chair.
I'll make a, a recommendation that we nominate Tim Narwall for Vice Chair. Second.
Do we have any other nominations? Or is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Dick. Aye. Marilyn.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Norm, aye. Um, let me see, we also have to decide on CMRPC rep?
Aye.
We do that by voting?
Do we have to do secretaries?
No.
Somebody had said that to me, that you gotta have one even though Tamika's our secretary.
That would be clerk.
Clerk, thanks.
One of the planning board members being clerk is an officer position. Not, it's different than staff.
Okay.
This is back in the days when there wasn't staff to-
Okay.
Act as a clerk for the board, board members did it themselves.
I just remember it came up in the select board, I'm like-
Sure, next time I'll ask our board.
So we don't need one, is what you're saying?
It's not something that needs to be voted on. Um, CMRPC, I don't remember that, how has that been handled in the past and it's not, that's escaping me at the moment.
Well, we have a-
You did a nomination.
Independent and alternate.
Yep. Correct.
We, we choose the rep, and right, like, let's use the alternate.
No, that's true, I just forgot the timing, one of the, the timing of it.
That's a very good question.
Is it the beginning of the year or the fiscal year of us?
We do usually get notification from them.
Uh, yes, and the, the voting thing is out there and all that stuff is going on right now. And, at, uh-
We, we get a notification from them, for us to notify them, right?
Yeah, you should've had something come through about, uh, not o- not only what I, I just showed you, Dave, but, uh, I don't know if that was online. This is just the, uh, Woods Dinner thing here, this, it was nothing to do about the-
I don't-
Well, let's, let's just put it this way, my name is on, on the ballot.
For-
Assistant Treasurer of the Executive Committee.
Well, can it hurt if we vote?
No, if you just vote to affirm that the delegate is whomever, that would probably cover it. Even if it's not necessary to do it, it would still-
Yeah.
Be fine.
It's not illegal, that way. So, Tim, wanna make a motion?
Yeah, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, appoint, uh, Mr. Williams as our CMRPC representative.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Remember, you can't say no, Vinnie.
Hearing no, uh, discussion, Tim.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Norm, aye. Okay, um, and again, I know it is not on the agenda, but since Dick brought it up, uh, we have received notice of the CMRPC Annual Dinner. I believe, whether they say this Thursday is deadline for-
Uh-
Yeah, it's the twenty-seventh.
Okay, Dick, since you're the treasurer, we eat lobster this year.
Yeah.
Uh, that chicken or beef stuff, lobster.
So, anyways, and it is, uh, in, 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 in grafted, grafted.
Well, as long as they're not zooming from McDonald's, I'm good.
Yeah, at the Highfields Golf and Country Club.
Ooh. They're anticipating a, a good turnout and, yeah.
Aye.
And it sounds like, let's see, June tenth?
On the calendar here.
I'll, I'll tell you what-
Say, uh-
That's a Thursday.
Thursday, yeah?
Yeah, it usually is.
Second Thursday.
I'll tell you what makes a difference for me is, is it going to be mask free?
Yes.
It is?
Well, by Governor Baker's decree, it should be.
Yeah.
It's a function, it's indoor and outdoor, it has a twenty-ninth there, mask free. Unless, the individual place requires it, which they still can't do.
Yeah.
Well, the customers, we could have, we could have to have to. You're never gonna get a full clientele, it's gonna-
You know, the thing, the thing, the thing is, I would-
If I have to, yeah.
I would hesitate to go if I spent three hours.
Masked. What you do is you just have a drink in front of you the whole time.
Yeah, we, we do that.
Sorry. Keep that jack coming every five minutes.
So, um, can you get a count too, CMRPC, if we decide?
Do you wanna, you have a, a question first, whether it's masks, does that matter in your decisions or?
I, I'm showing up non-masked.
I, I'm gonna say for religious reasons. Okay, it's not going to be, golfers don't wear masks.
No.
She like to take it off to eat anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, like, or drink.
Or drink, or have appetizers and things like that.
Or just have a mask with a big cutout on it.
Yeah. I'll wear it on the back of my head.
Yeah.
So, uh, who is interested in going? I hear one.
Well, I'm already there.
I know. Food's phenomenal.
You got-
I feel this is a great place, I've been there before, plenty of times. Just a dinner, right?
It's, uh, it's, uh, dinner meeting.
They go to a presentation, yeah, yeah.
It's a networking event, it's an awards ceremony, it's a quarterly commission meeting.
It's, it, it, it goes, well, they say from five to eight, eight-thirty, like, three hours, it's at least, yeah, three hours. And, uh, there's also a golf tournament if you wanna go earlier.
Yeah. I play polo and I golf.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't really care, just, just, I'd like to do-
Well, the, uh, twenty-seventh is the deadline, so if you decide between now and then, I can add another person.
Couple more days, yeah. I mean, the hard thing for me is you just never know if I'm gonna come. Not gonna be leaving roughly at four o'clock on a Thursday afternoon, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
And we're right there, I could, I could be there, so I'm probably saying no.
If it's raining, you'll come.
I wouldn't wanna commit, yeah, right? I think last minute tickets, I'll let you know, but I wouldn't commit, now I wouldn't be able to even commit in two days.
Okay.
I really wouldn't know, yeah, we got two weeks of-
So, uh, one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, I would like to go.
Is a dinner over forty-nine dollars, 'cause I don't know if, if staff can accept, uh, dinners for that kind of, this piece of eligibility?
Well, nicely involved the Regional Plan Commission, the last time they just had the event and-
Yeah.
Two years ago, right, they just figured out how to finance it.
They did?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they did, I don't know.
Last one I made it to was that in Stowe, that we had it in Stowe that one year, the country, no.
Oh.
Where the heck did I drive to? It was, oh, Marlboro maybe, no?
There was one for, near the, uh, there's a little tower there and, um, is it Nostre?
Yes, 'cause you had to go around, it had a long driveway up to the golf course.
Yes, we had one, what, Demis Farm?
Demis Farm, yeah.
They're trying to be different.
Off of one forty-six there, there was a country club, Pleasantville or Pleasant?
Oh, you're talking about the, um-
It's Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley, yeah.
So, anyway, the, uh-
Yeah.
The thing is, at least, other than the event last year, in the past, planning board has picked up the tab for that, so. Either way, okay. Uh, I think we got that, yeah. Okay, minutes. Oh.
I make a motion for just the minutes. Second.
The only question I had, and maybe this is a typo, is on page two, at the bottom, it said ANRAD with Conservation Commission, I couldn't figure out what that was.
Um, uh, Tim, it's in, I'm trying to remember, they, um-
Is it an acronym or is it, I don't care?
It's an acronym, yeah, it's an abbreviated notice of request of determination or something like that, but, yeah, it's a, it's a con-con term.
Yeah, I just thought it was A and R with an AD added to it, that's the reason why I was trying to figure out what the AD was. Okay, good enough, that's it, Tony, I have a question for you.
I, I had a little question. Way up here under the ANRAD layer, it says, uh, just up about five lines from, uh, the roll call, it says, "Up the temporary road and down Britnall Drive." I says, "You sure it is not up or under Britnall?" It's so funny.
Okay, where, where did that, where did that come from?
Well, it was Clea himself.
Where, where he was?
Was he?
Clea himself, yeah, it said, Clea said he'll be installed water and sewer line.
He was gonna be doing that up the middle of the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, which, that's-
So, is it, is it down Britnall? Because when you come out there, you have to go up to go where he has-
Yeah, the hill, so.
Is it up, or is it under Britnall? I'm just joking.
Period.
Well, what'll happen is the sewer will go up and then not come back down.
It's kinda interesting, I was talking with Joe Buckley today, he doesn't know about that. Oh, boy.
Well, that was gonna be one of my questions, is, you know, if that's happening, obviously we're in touch with, or he's in touch with the commissioner on that.
He will have to be.
You know? When something like that happens, are, is everybody else in this area already connected?
Well, it's not the, it, it's E, it's E one eleven pump, or E one pumps.
Well, some of them would be.
Yeah.
Some of those are probably right up on top of the hill and they will gravity feed.
Gravity feed down, I would think-
Some of the houses in the back.
It'll probably come to a point of gravity feed and then that'll go down-
Yeah.
Temporary road and-
The, the couple that are right across from me.
Yeah.
Those will have to be E one pumps.
Yeah.
Yeah, but can you imagine having a pressurized and a gravity system going in the same line?
Not the same line, no, but up into a catch base and type of a thing, you know?
Well, they'll initially go to the same line in the middle of the road, right?
Yeah, to the highest point, and then from there, would it be gravity down? I don't know, I, I, out of my jurisdiction.
Well, Joe's gonna have to, uh, have a discussion with the designer on that one, one of the, uh-
Yeah.
I've only seen like E one systems like, like the ones around where I am, they're all E one systems.
Yeah.
I've never seen, I, I guess, I don't remember in Rutland where there's been mixing of E one and gravity feds. Can't think of one subdivision that was-
Although, uh, from you, it goes to the top of the hill on Bear Hill Tube.
But that's all pressurized till it gets to the top.
To the top, right.
Then it gravity feed.
Down to, yeah.
But doesn't that go to a pumping station and transfer first before?
Down to Britnall.
Yeah, but this won't, this, these will be E one and gravity feds off of Britnall into a common line that would go up to, I'm guessing that, that pumping station where Bear Hill and, and, uh, Britnall Estates come together, you know, that, the dead end road where that pumping station is?
Right, that, that's where it's gonna go to.
I'm just-
Gravity feed down to-
I know this is Joe Buckley's, but I'm just, an E one pump and a gravity feed, I'd have a good check valve on the back of my house, or back of my, uh, system coming in.
This is ten lots.
Oh, I know, and some of them run at eleven hundred feet from the house to the road.
Yeah.
You better have a good E one left, or E one up for that.
To make sure it gets, it's stalled very, very well.
Yeah.
Now, with the soil, is it, is there any gravel in that, that kind of woods?
Not on my land.
Not on your land.
I don't, I, I think that's all, I don't know the roots, there's no clay out there.
There's sand and clay and-
It's, it's, well, at least, and granted, my land is like across the street. This is about two inches of topsoil, three feet of subsoil, and then it's hardpaned.
It is hardpaned.
And, uh, they struck bedrock at like eight feet.
That's what, that's what happened with, uh, what's his name's, um, where Helly and Michelons is.
Yeah.
That was, uh, it was so bad that they were gonna dynamite hydrofrack, get the well open, I'm going, I'm moving on, next house, yeah. Thank you very much.
Just to jump in on that, a lot of these questions can be answered on the eighth of June, because the special permit hearing, the date loss is on the eighth of June.
Yeah.
So, I'm just gonna hold that till later, but since we're talking about it now, that's true.
Keeping it back here, but maybe we should have Joe at that.
I think we definitely should, or at least try and ask the questions if he's already had, something he already made, you know? Already said he's doing this, but nobody knows about it.
Okay, at the-
He, he knows about it now, I don't.
At the six, eight years?
Now he does, but, uh-
But he doesn't know how or-
Right, well, he, he did say that these are not, this system will be part of Rutland, 'cause he will not have another private sewer system in Rutland on his watch. Like it's on Britnall right now. The same thing.
You want, to see if Joe Buckley's available and we talk about sorrel, huh, sorrels, soils.
I would think that we, we need the, the road before we-
And to Norm's point, we, we didn't ask Clea, is this gonna be a town sewer system or a private one? Because if, if Clea says private, I'm going out that door until Joe's done, throwing a gasket, 'cause he specifically, 'cause we were over their meeting at one time, we were talking about that sewers issue on Britnall and they had a backup or something like that and-
He doesn't want, I don't, does not want another pump station system.
Yeah.
Anywhere.
Or private, because he said that I don't wanna have to deal with having to fix that system and then charge people for it. So, I want it owned by the town if it's gonna be a sewer system, but we'll ask Clea that when he comes in.
But I, I, don't you, do you feel that we should have Joe, you know, online or something with us, so?
See if he wants to stop in, bring donors.
I have a question on, uh, it's under the same, uh, ANRs, for Blair, it's on page two, and it's down, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine lines, and it says, uh, "Tim asked if it would be possible for Clea to put down three to four hundred yards of gravel on Britnall." And then it says, which I have no problem with, "To make it more appealing to buyers."
Well, I don't really care about that part of it, but-
That was my sales pitch.
Yeah, that was the sales pitch.
Okay.
And you said do it to fix the sewer, you put him underneath the road, you know what I mean? And do it to the people that already live on the road and make it better, instead of was. Make it better than you left it, is how I would put it, you know?
Britnall has needed gravel.
Yeah.
For years, several years now. And they just don't have the money to do it. So, hey, if we can get some money out of Blair to do it, why not?
And then do we know what three to four hundred yards brings in inches or whatever, maybe that's-
It'll do that.
Inches, one thousand feet.
Yep, that's what Joe said.
So, that's pretty good for a thousand foot.
Yeah. I mean, that's harder, twenty-seven mile, so.
I'm gonna say just about, I keep thinking, I was trying to, you know, figure it out. I've got five hundred feet of frontage, my next neighbor up the street has four hundred. And then the others are just a couple hundred each. Damn, here we can squeeze more out of them.
Yeah.
It's cheaper than wood right now.
Mm-hmm. All right.
But he did say yes, that's what, should we put?
Well, now, that, that yes is-
That's true, I'd just like to get it in, in writing.
That yes, that yes becomes-
Maybe after approval.
That becomes a condition of the approval of the special permit.
Okay.
In detail.
Okay.
You know, type of gravel, when, and Carl will lay out for it, what we want for the gravel.
No.
And just so you guys know, um, on the two things, the open space and rec, I wasn't able to get to that first meeting last week, but I'll get to the next one, I just got a couple updates, there's a lot of excitement about some stuff, so, um, I'll be on that next meeting, and then I'll have some feedback for everybody. And then the other thing was that I did get to meet with Dave for a little bit today, just to go through some standard protocol stuff and better understand, not to bog down the meetings with redundant questions that you guys all know, you know what I mean? So, I went with Dave a little bit, and I'll be trying to do that again if he's got some time before the next meeting, and it went well, so.
Don't be afraid to ask questions.
No, no, we absolutely will be, but Dave was able to get me through, um, had a lot of, all some basics down, so just update you guys on those two things.
Anything else on minutes?
Not exactly on the minutes, but have we been still the meeting before the town meeting?
Well, that's the, eh, right?
Yeah, do you usually, do we have, because, because Clea-
Town meeting isn't there.
Clea got everything done with the road right, and that's the thing we were worried about, not being finished, 'cause the, that got all, uh, what's the word? The pump station got all of it taken care of and agreed upon, so, and Joe Buckley signed off on it, so that was the only thing we really need now, right?
Well, the, the board does, the board will be asked for a recommendation on the two zoning petitions. So, there's a reason for the board to at least keep the option open of having a meeting, should it be necessary.
Yeah.
And that's why we're there, to make sure you know what we're talking about.
Yeah, we usually, like, set it up a half an hour before.
Yeah.
We go up on a floor, we're trying to, you know, make sure we do-
Then we do this.
Yeah. No, it's, it's just in case, there's, you know, something goes completely with something that we might have on the town meeting or-
It's a war, yeah.
You know, and, you know, it's just like, you know, for one thing, we have the, uh, the modification of the, uh, light industrial zone, and on the floor, we're gonna have to amend it, and that, that could, who knows?
Oh, that's gonna have discussion, there's gonna be like two or three people that wanna have an, an issue about it.
Yeah.
What is this one? Is it now the time to go through that, or do we wanna go through it all the time?
Very, very quickly, we're modifying the light industrial, uh, zoning bylaw, so that things like a restaurant, or retail store, or whatever, can be put in a light industrial zone. That was not listed as a permitted use before.
And where, where are the light industrials that we have? Honey Farms area.
Are you showing the dark purple color on the map there? Or the dark pink rather?
Oh, that's it, yeah.
Well, no, there's that, there's a little parcel right at the holding line on sixty-eight, uh, this light industrial, or, this is plain light industrial.
Light industrial and also, and also entertainment.
And there's also a section up at, uh, River Road, North Rutland.
Yeah, and it, it's behind, um, Putnam's.
Putnam's, yeah.
And then where Capper used to be, going down the road.
Yeah, over sixty-eight, when the cell, cell stores, isn't that?
That is correct, that's where that, the purple is right where the-
That's basically it.
And the bus farm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can barely see it, but the Honey Farms has got a little pink zone where-
Right on the central-
Oh, what was the name of my favorite cab company? Tim Snyder.
Yeah, yeah. That, that is, uh, by a citizen's petition by Clea Blair, did that change?
Because he's put a restaurant, or wants to put a restaurant there, so he doesn't wanna have some patio, probably serving area out of that.
Originally, Light Industry couldn't even have a restaurant, so he was prohibited from putting in that, and that's why he wanted to push it, that's, that's fine. Yet he could put a pot store across it, because it wasn't Light Industry across from the, uh, Honey Farms on Martinelli's property.
That's not Light Industry.
Nope.
That big garage?
Nope.
Business.
Well, it is, it's-
That's town, town center.
Town center, but it's, it, part of town center, yeah, mixed use.
Hmm. That's a very industrial type building, you know?
Yeah, oh, it is, it is. But, you know, it's allowed. Anyway, it was by, hidden by a citizen's petition, and the original bylaw, uh, had site plan, um, review done by the zoning board of appeals. In the petition that he submitted, he did not change that language. And it's pretty much been decided that it's really better that the planning board handle that. Okay, we do site plan review in the town center districts, village center districts, um-
When this was put together years ago, it was, even, and there, there's another bylaw for business for any site plan, still says ZBA on it, so we probably should fix that somewhere down the road too.
Probably would hurt.
Get all the ZBA out of the site plan review.
Yeah. So, anyway, on the floor, we have to amend that bylaw to take out the references, zoning board of appeals, and put in planning board.
We already talked to them and they were-
And then adding the, the restaurant or food store.
That's already in there, that, that's part of the, what Clea's got for the citizen's petition, but what he did put in was the change from zoning to planning board, that's what we'll amend it, and Clea, we fine with it, and we just have to write it up and give it to a needed-
Oh, it's not gonna make any difference, yeah, that's just a-
That's it, and then-
Internal thing.
Well, yeah, but then, then again, you know, you don't know how people live whenever you-
Well, that's what I was just gonna ask, what's the pros and cons so far, what's everybody saying?
If somebody wanted to make an appeal, who do you appeal it to? You can't appeal it to the zoning board of appeals.
'Cause they just, they did the site plan.
Yeah, that's why it should come to the planning board, and then if there's an appeal, it goes to the zoning board of appeals.
Nobody thought about that.
An appeal is because when something has been denied, yeah.
Yeah, but if the denying, if the denying party is also reviewing party, that's sort of difficult.
And also, these days, the practice has changed such that the planning board, planning boards more often than not than in the past have more expertise in doing site plan review. They have access to the, to the experts, they have more staff, uh, they have more resources generally, so they're typically, planning boards become more expert in doing site plan review than in the past.
I don't, I don't think the ZBA has a, a site plan review process either. We've actually got-
Not as strictly defined as the planning board.
Yes, yeah.
And I think our thinking from that originally, as that, going back to the committee that did the, you know, set up the zoning, was that the Sims was, uh, you know, there as an industrial. And now, they're not there, so that, oh, the question is, can we open that building or stuff?
Or restaurant, or, and what else is in there?
But anyway.
Fitness center.
No, what else is in the bylaw change, restaurant?
Well, it's basically calling, saying that we can be any, it's taking the business section, you know?
Maybe in the interest of time, I don't make it through. I could send you the copy of the language, because you were not on the board at the time.
Especially if it's coming up on this, I think this thing's-
Just so you're up to date, I'll send you both of the citizen's petitions so you have that information, and I'll send you the recommendation for the street acceptance as well, that you can get up to speed, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me or-
Yeah, the only other question, yeah, is just going, what, what, what the pros and cons people are so far saying, you know what I mean?
Well, the only-
Yes and no, what-
The only thing I can see is that some people might think of it as a polygraph by the planning board.
Yeah, well, I'll stand up, I'm gonna bring my sign, no stipend, no work.
Well, I mean, I, and now, there was a hearing held on this as is required, and nobody attended the hearing. So, we don't really know what the pros and cons are, because those haven't been aired out.
And then, no, there's only pros, because, you know what I mean? There's only been, there's no opposition, so what's the-
It's pretty hard, pretty hard to see the downside of it, yeah.
No, you have a vacant building, that's what we was revitalizing, and then the other one, which is-
Put something good into there.
And it's not just, it's not just that, 'cause it's all of the industry, it's all-
It could bring all the other areas too.
Next to the cell stores.
More potential, business.
Restaurant.
All right, sorry to, like, turn around and-
And then the, the second one, we have no action, correct?
Second one, we are recommending no action, that's the marijuana change, change, just, yeah, to allow marijuana anywhere in the world.
Our city. Alright, keep it as it is. Alright, good.
Okay, anything else on the minutes? Do we have a motion? We have a motion.
We have a motion, yeah.
Second. Okay, roll call, Tim.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Marijuana.
Hi.
Yeah, Tim. Aye, Tom, aye.
Um, before you go on, I was just wondering if I could just let you know that we have people in the audience for Palm Gussit. So you might, would you consider maybe taking that one out of order, so these folks could-
Sure, absolutely. Let's get there. Where's the? Oh, yes, yes, yes. Get that pollen off my car again.
So, this is, uh-
Car wash, seven, oh, yeah, yeah.
And this is a pre-application meeting only, this is not a hearing, the bylaw requires a pre-application meeting, this is a special permit matter for an upcoming meeting.
There. There it is. Okay, so who do we have? Speaking for this?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, this is Zachary Stinson, my father is here as well, Brian Stinson.
Hi, how are you?
Doing well, yourselves?
Pretty good, I think, you're doing great. So I hear you're sick of seeing a lot of dirty cars around Rutland.
Hey, it's been a heck of a couple weeks here, and I think everyone wants to pollen off their cars.
Yeah. So, anyway, uh, can you give us a little bit of a narrative, of a description of what you're looking to do, if we have the, uh, land in front of us?
Absolutely, you're looking at the land there, uh, my engineer Julian Vortruba is here as well, he can probably explain, uh, any of the details of this a lot better than I could. Um, if you look at what's, what's here, we're, we're proposing to do a two bay auto wash in between our existing buildings over on thirteen Palm Gussit Road.
Is this a drive-through or just a drive-in?
Uh, it's a drive-through, we're gonna use the horseshoe that's gonna come through, the, uh, the entrance would be closer to, if you're looking at it from fifty-six, it would be closer to the public, public works building. And it's gonna come back around, back on horseshoe through, back on, onto, uh, fifty-six, further up toward Main Street.
I think it would go like this.
Absolutely.
Like here, through, and then out?
Correct.
Through and out.
That's what we're looking at.
But, can we have two drives that close, cause I thought we had three hundred?
No, the same property, so.
Oh, so it doesn't, okay.
And they exist now.
Exactly, we've had this engineered out, and we can fit, um, right now, looking at it, we have eight cars sitting in front.
I didn't know that, you can already, you know, it's not, you're not driving a semi-truck, a trailer truck through there right now, but you-
Absolutely not, no.
You drive through there, though, right?
The limit on the height of vehicles there would be seven foot two inches.
Okay. Now, is, is there room on, uh, on the entrance, if someone were to drive in and then change their mind and wanna come back out again, would there be room for them to turn around and come back out the same way they went in?
That's a good question, um, and right now, with two lanes there, uh, that might be congested. If we start with one lane, as we proposed initially, we'll see how things go, uh, but that is a good question, no, and, and if, if, if there was a bottleneck right there, potentially, people would have to back up.
Okay, would they have to back all the way, or just some part?
Well, I'm not anticipating on having a full sixteen cars there at all times. And can you turn a car around right there? Yes, I do it all the time. I turn my truck, my twenty-five hundred around in that driveway, in the bottom driveway, all the time, and I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zach, how many, of course, I don't have a, a good idea. How many vehicles can you get in the end from the entrance into, say, the entrance of the bay? Five, six?
Sixteen, on double bay.
So that would be eight on one side, eight on the second.
Correct.
Eight and eight together on the two lanes going in.
Absolutely.
What happens if the first eight go in on the left-hand side and nobody goes on the right-hand side, does that cause, so nobody now can get pat, you know what I'm saying?
That's not an issue, but if eight were on one side, you'd still be able to turn a vehicle around there.
And you still be able to just drive through, so you can have, there's enough room.
Or you can still drive through, we can open the bays, you can still drive through, if there's an issue, we'd be able to open those bays, and you can drive right through and egress through the other side on, on fifty-six there.
That's my second question, attended or unintended?
Um, we're looking at, it would be attended during business hours, but it's going to be a twenty-four hour wash. Uh, so it would be unattended, camera attended, uh, monitored by all of us that live right here, close in Rutland. That if there were an issue there, we would be able to respond within ten minutes.
Okay. You guys know, and, and girls know I'm going with this, I do not want a Dunkin' Donuts nightmare.
No, and I don't either, I agree with you, I try to ride through that every morning.
Because if you count the cars going Dunkin' Donuts there, it's eight cars.
Yeah.
And then stacked and packed outside of it, so.
Look at what they have there for cars i- i- in our, our parking lot, I don't see that being any worse than, or than, than what we already have there.
And get, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to kill it, I just wanna make sure that. And it's more heading north than it is heading south, you know, it's cars all of a sudden going to take a left, and all of a sudden they can't, and they're sitting over the hill there.
Well, if you look as you pull through there, suppose someone's backed up, they have to pull through the wash, which that they'll be able to do. We have a full parking lot and a full reserved parking lot there, that traffic isn't going to back up there, it's, there, there's free movement there. We pull oil trucks in and out of there all day.
Are the, you know, all those, the retaining wall, um, I'm assuming is that what the the, the hash marks are, you know?
Yeah, that's where they're, absolutely, and there's riprap on the other side, what you're looking at over on the left, about where your arrow is, that's vacuums right there. Which aren't going to be fully occupied, and there's enough room there. Like I said, we can pull our oil trucks in and out of there freely, uh, we're not having an issue.
That's existing, but are you looking to take that out, then?
No, that, that's already existing, um, and, and we're not going to cordon that off any more than what it is. Other than having vacuums at the end of that riprap over on the left. At the, uh, two twenty-two mark.
So they can pull down past the existing, where it says existing garage, and there'll be vacuums down there to clean out?
Uh, it's over on the left, if you look at the three buildings, the existing building number thirteen, the proposed two bay, and the existing garage. The vacuums are going to be facing right on the left there.
Down here?
Yeah, right where you're looking, yeah, right there, that's, that's base for vacuums, and right up until the end of there. There's also an existing parking lot next to the existing garage, where there could be a turnaround, it's easy to turn anything around there.
Okay. So if all that, you know, the circle of retaining wall area that's kinda stuck out there right next to the parking spots?
Yes.
Trying to figure out how you're gonna drive through from the north entrance in through the bay, come around that, do you drive over the parking spots that are there?
Um, those are on the plan, they're over exaggerated, I, I would appreciate if anyone has an issue with that. Go down there and take a look at it, drive through there.
Yeah, 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 I'm just, I mean, my thing is that people are gonna be able to just go in and out, and as people are in the parking spots vacuuming.
I see that people-
Cars going in and out there, too?
Absolutely, and, and I invite anyone to come down there and take a look at the property, it, it's well set up for it.
I would just add, too, if I could at this point, so, what you're looking at is not the final, final plan. We did have a staff meeting, an interdepartmental review team meeting with DPW, Far, police.
Uh.
Landing office, if I could just finish, Zach, just one second, please. So we did, uh, offer some comments and questions, and the applicant took those down as notes, they're working with the, the engineer to refine the plan. So this being the pre-application meeting, that the plan wasn't quite ready, we just wanted to get to the board, what, what was available at this time, and have the applicant talk to some of the questions or comments that the board might have at this time.
Absolutely, maybe Mr. Vortruba, who's here, would be able to answer those questions better than I could.
Hi, this is Julian, I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is, this is pretty much a concept that you're looking at. It says proposed site plan, but it was a conceptual plan to give the ideas, and now we'll get into, like, the question you just had about the, the parking spots. We'll show the vacuums, we'll show the, the way the cars can come and go, we'll put some arrows, so there's no question on what the final site plan will, uh, will, will be built, so that there's no backing or, or congestion. So I'll, I'll talk with the Stinsons on exactly where they want those vacuum stations. And to make sure that there isn't any bottlenecking, or anybody getting trapped, where they don't need to be trapped, so.
What, and, and Julie, excuse me for interrupting, what, what did Chief Monaco say about lighting on a twenty-four seven operation? Did he give any comment?
Well, lighting was discussed, and I think the mood was to use shielding as much as possible, or dim the lights and have your security lights that are necessary, to main, to maintain safety on the site. But otherwise, to be aware of light trespass, and avoid a situation on Route sixty-eight on a site that I'm not gonna identify, which has a light issue.
The bus, the bus sixty-eight?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, storage.
So I think there was some, some receptivity to coming up with a light design that doesn't have all kinds of light trespass, I believe.
Well, I'm fine with the deal, and it's just too many years as a streetlight engineer, of basically focusing everything down and not and, and not being a landing, landing lights for, uh, seven forty-seven, but yeah.
It was discussed, we, we don't have any planned details to show the kind of light shielding in play, but it was discussed, and I do believe there will be some attempt to to maintain that, and not to have a, you know, a, a light trespass.
All, all I was, Dave, all I was looking for was this entrance on the right and the left, having some type of lighting. So at, at twelve o'clock at night, if there's some issues, and Rutland's finest is going by, they can see that, that's all I was looking for.
That was part of the discussion to lighting, so that police can observe the site, see if there's anybody on there who shouldn't be.
I don't need this thing lit up like, uh, Holden, uh, town housing area, where you could land planes and, uh, military there, but just enough that, uh, Chief Monaco's happy, and if he's already commented, I'm good.
I think signage, signage is gonna be important here, too.
Yeah, ins and outs, definitely, it, this is one that, I, I agree. A large LED flashing sign with, don't listen to me, I'm joking.
Big blinking arrow.
Yeah, come on in. Suds and, uh, yeah, that definitely on this one is, I would say signs are needed for entrance and exits to indicate.
Brony, all that, I mean, I mean, I'll say, I'm, you know, I'm very excited that this is a proposed, you know, business to put into the center of Rutland, uh, absolutely, so, I think the main thing is just to make sure you have traffic jams. Whatever we can do to make sure that there's not gonna be, have you guys thought about all the people from baseball that are gonna be parking in those spots? Right? What happens to that, you know what I mean, if you're not staffed during certain days?
As long as, as long as they're getting the car wash, I don't think that would be a problem.
Jacked and stacked, and there's not an attendant at the car wash, you're gonna have people parking in there and just, you know?
And this is a question for Dave, aren't they trying to fix that by put parking down on the?
On the in, way inside.
Yeah, way inside, isn't that something, is that the town working on that, or is that through you, or?
Uh, there's a discussion on that item as part of the town center study, it's a recommendation that's gonna be made to better handle parking for the field, but there's nothing in the works right now for an actual project or plan to do something.
It taking down the DPW building for parking is not part of the plan.
No.
Or not.
Oh, that's incorrect, anyhow, okay, I just wondered, cause to, to, to Kevin's point, I, I, oh, man. That's, that's twelve spaces for twelve more, uh, baseball rent, parents.
Well, if it makes any difference, right now, no one that's out there playing baseball is parking in our parking lot.
No, no, yeah, when it's all nice and paved, and, you know, I don't know, and then you got the, the St. Patty's, cause it is, it's all part of, there's more parking in Rutland, Marshfield, there's always people that are slowly kinda creeping out on the street and parking in front of the DPW thing, and so is there, as we talk through the town center walking area, with St. Patty's, you guys, is your intent to have that all-new pavement, I'm assuming, right? You're not gonna have somebody come out of a car wash onto gravel, so you're gonna have all-new pavement in there, can you have a walking path so that people can walk from, you know, the town, the, well, which are St. Patty's, right, all, you kinda can now, but
Well, there's gonna be with-
Walk right down to the-
I think there's gonna be sidewalks there based upon-
From what I understand, they're going to make sidewalks, that they're rerouting fifty-six.
Sidewalk. That's, that's where devil tools to be on one side, and the, and the baseball and all that.
That's the next year and a half, all the way to the second entrance of Britnell State, or whatnot, Britnell State. Brunel, Brunel West, they're gonna have.
Are they widening the road to do that, or are they taking the existing road and taking the sidewalk out?
Widen it, wow, this is a-
Cause then you even have more or less room for cars to get by when they're taking-
This is going to be, uh, what do they call it, uh?
Major reconstruction.
Yeah.
Of the entire road.
If I could, to that, on point to what's before the board now, uh, the roadway changes for this part of the road have been provided to the applicant, so this may change, the, the, um, the entrance and exit may change based upon that, but they have that information, and hopefully, we'll work that into the final plan.
Okay.
But that's a good point, and there will be some road changes, sure, that may have an effect here.
Yes, if you're one or two sidewalks, originally, I thought that was a good idea.
They, that's the whole negotiation process of, uh, easement, not easement, but, uh, land taking, at the state of way they're undoing.
The town has to buy.
So that flagpole's probably not gonna maybe be there, when I'm looking at. Um, that's gonna be close, right?
They may approach a little bit, I don't think it's going to the flagpole.
Yeah, no, but it looks, but it's gonna be right there, so, okay.
And we got enough room, is there, how steep is this?
I'm assuming that's not gonna be passable.
In case, uh, in case of an emergency, would you, uh, be able to run out over this? You got twelve-inch stones in the back, and, you know, or something like that?
You're talking that cul-de-sac there, Dick, that little cul-de-sac?
Well, they're a little, well, I, I'm just saying, I, I don't know if, you might have enough room in, you know, for an emergency on both sides. But if you needed to get into the back of this property in a hurry, is there any way of coming around, you know, the, uh, at, at the end, at, end of the, the, uh, the church's property here?
Garage, cause somebody hurt themselves, the only way you're getting in is gonna be the exit to the car wash right now. The only way you're gonna get in.
Well.
So the exit to the car wash is the entrance to the vacuums. Right, do people vacuum first, and then car wash after, and I'm just throwing this stuff out?
Oh, no, it's car wash first, and then vacuum after.
That's what they do, okay, just, you know?
That's what they do, it's the one in, uh, cause the one in Holden, the vacuuming first.
Says one inch, twenty feet.
The one, so.
That's just about an inch.
Over by Walmart and Lester, you have to go through then.
Right here?
Vacs, vacuums of the outside, yeah.
Which I wouldn't agree with, too, you can vacuum, you can wipe down or whatever, if you got, you know, cloth rags, you wipe it down, you vacuum, and then you move on.
Maybe five, eight.
What, scale?
Yeah.
I'm not sure this is a scale, and, and this has been shrunk, so.
Well, it's, it's, one inch equals twenty.
It's not the scale, though, this, this, this has been, this, this has been shrunk.
Where, where the people parked now to go into the office, you've got a, what do you wanna call it, like a panhandle out there? Say, it, you, you're right. I'm just wondering if there's a, is there a way, or, or not, could have, uh, a fire truck, ambulance, or something like that, drive over where, where you're pulling with your car right now, how steep of a bank is it, with those rocks?
That would be too steep to, to tackle with a vehicle, but where we're at right now, with that parking, like I said, this drawing isn't just isn't necessarily to scale, if you look at the property, and right now, when we have our parking lot filled, which is next to existing building thirteen. We can park six to seven vehicles right there in front of that small wraparound. And there is still enough egress that even people that are parked on the parking on the left side, on that two hundred twenty-two feet. You could easily pull, we have no problem pulling our oil trucks, our ten-wheeler right through there. I believe an ambulance or a fire truck wouldn't have a problem getting through there.
Alright, if you get an oil truck through, it's probably sized in one of our engines, roughly, yeah. I, I mean, for the pre, pre-meeting, I'm fine with where we're at, I mean, it, 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 both chiefs have given their, three chiefs have given their input.
I'd have a, I'd have a cop path in the back.
Right, then there's also a site plan.
Yeah.
Aspect on the land use that I think, we, we've talked about in terms of striping it. Some kind of a sample showing the maximum number of vehicles that could be on there, you know, like a template, um, you know, that kinda thing, so.
Overall, I like it, yeah, oh, yeah.
So do I.
Oh, yeah, no, I love, yeah, I-
A- a- as long as, as Chief Monaco was there.
You're gonna upset a lot of people, cause I put- I think you're gonna upset a lot of people, cause I heard a lot of people always have ideas. I would've put a car wash in Rutland, so, you know, and it's, it's been out there for a while and I'm, I'm glad that the possibility of it happened. And then what about a, um, a walk around? What would typically happen there, being that it's two hundred yards from here, um, when can we go take a walk? At what, at what point do we talk about?
I don't think we would wanna see the final plan.
You're welcome to come take a walk around anytime you'd like.
I wanna, I wanna, since this is preliminary, I'd like to see, uh, the next step.
This is Julie, and one of, one of the things that Brian had asked me, and he gave me the information from the new highway, the new rework. I got all the plans, so I'm gonna superimpose what's proposed on Route fifty-six. So you'll see a lot of the detail you guys are talking about right now will be on this plan. That's one of the exercises I have to do, cause it's all drawn up. I just gotta impose it onto this piece. And then we'll have a lot of those questions answered.
One of these auto washes, like, um, the one you got over in Holden with, uh, you know, the ones that's, that's all spray, you don't even, they go around the car.
One of them will be what they call a touch free, uh, and the other one will be what they call a soft touch, which would have brushes.
Yeah, both.
Exactly, a two bay building right there.
Gotcha, one of these. And the, the only other thing, and this is to the board, I've got questions, is I'm looking at the entrance and I know this is just preliminary, but it's got pavement and then it's got, and it says gravel and it looks like there's gravel all the way up to the entrance to the auto wash. Is that correct?
No, present, presently, it probably is.
Okay.
I'm sure they're gonna pave it.
Yes, presently, that's correct, but it would be paved right to the end of that.
Okay.
Of, of that building on either end.
All right, so the whole entrance will be paved and then the exit will be, if there's any gravel, that little section there, that'll be paved too.
Absolutely.
Perfect, that's it.
And then would your, your intent be the same, keep with the same aesthetics of this building, you know, number thirteen? It's a really nice looking property as is with you guys.
We're not looking to go any bigger than we have to go as far as regulations on, you know, access for lighting, like you, like you brought up with the, uh, with the police, if they need to see what's going on there. I don't wanna make it any more bright than it needs to be. I don't wanna be intrusive here. I just wanna follow the rules and make everything work.
And, but then the building itself, would it be a metal building? Would it be a, you know, the color scheme? Would it, would it go in line with the house?
Absolutely. It's gonna look just like what the existing building is and the existing garage. It's not gonna be a quonset hut. It's, it's going to stay in the same model of structure as everything else.
And the same color scheme and everything, yeah?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't wanna make a eyesore.
Zach, is, is I notice, just because I know it's AutoCAD, but the building actually goes into the steep side of the, uh, there's about a five feet or eight feet of the building that's actually in your gravel and then on the slope.
I see that.
Is that just an AutoCAD mistake?
Uh, that's something you would have to refer to Mr. Gore Truva, whether we would put a retention wall if we have to cut into that. I'm not a hundred percent on that.
Again, that's, it's, it's just a mention now. I'm not asking to do anything. It's just, when you're doing the final plan, think about that, cause I'm looking at that going.
Absolutely, no, and I see exactly what you're looking at, and that's a good point.
Yeah. That's it.
That's all I got. The DPW entrance. They have one, if you go into the, where the building is, that, I thought they had a road that goes.
No, that's a dri- that's a drop off.
Yeah, I was gonna say big drop off.
Yeah.
But there's a, there's a driveway around.
I don't know, if you go wa- way in towards the back.
Well, it comes from the, the, the library comes around, right?
If the, if the back of the building is there, roughly. There is a road that used to come up around.
That's a dead end into a, a wall that's like probably twelve feet to Palmigus. There's no act, there's no way to get out. Cause it, it's got, it's got its building like this where the garages are. And then the, the property goes like this, so I don't think there's any.
Julie, can you, on, on your locust map, just, can you mark where the entrance to the DPW, how close it is?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I just want, you know, I, I'm, I don't think it's too close, but I just wanted to, just to be there to.
No, there's a chunk of land between there.
Not that, you know, not that big.
I still wanna see the final plans before we make, for many questions.
Well, I, I, you know, the, kinda, kinda the, the decision here is whether we're gonna give a recommendation to proceed with it, with an application.
Still moved.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing.
That was quick.
All right.
Uh, I don't, i- i- is that what you're looking for right now?
Yes, that's all that we're looking for right now. If we can all, uh, work together on this and, and find something that's gonna work for everyone. We're willing to jump through whatever hoops we have to do.
I think we could, we can try to make the hoops not too high and not too big.
Well, I, I mean, I think, I think the idea is to have a site that benefits you, the property owner, as well as the residents and guests of, of the town, and that it's a functional site, which, which does what it ought to do.
Yeah.
You know, so it did, a lot of this is site plan basics, and I think, you know, you have some more information tonight. You can add that to your IRT information. And if you need further assistance, please contact the planning office. We'd be glad to help you further.
That'd be great. That's all we're looking for today.
Okay, right. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? Well, uh, roll call, Tim.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Norm.
Aye.
So, looking forward to seeing some more.
Great, we'll get it for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Hey, Julie, is, is the north and south on this drawing right?
He doesn't answer me. I don't feel the love.
Yeah.
Depends which way you hold the paper.
Yeah. Okay. Back to, uh.
Uh, number five.
Number five, Barry Paxton Self Storage Facility, a plan modification. I don't know if you, maybe you had a chance to look at it. Yeah. I guess we'll call it, well, um, significant, but proposed, been a good knee, to me, not troubling.
And also in the supplemental materials, you'll find a letter from the property owner with a very brief narrative of what's happening at the site, given sizes of the buildings and so forth. Uh, I'm sorry, that's the basic narrative. Then there's an email indicating the size of the buildings and the changes that are gonna, that are proposed there.
Basically, they're pushing this building back, the shrinkage.
So they're making both buildings smaller.
I don't know. That middle one is being smaller or is it just being pushed closer to the boundary?
Uh, that's in the email, um.
The bigger building was two hundred and ten feet, is now a hundred and ninety feet. That building was also moved away from the retention pond thirty feet.
Yeah.
And that's why they're removing that wall, right? And that was just a cost thing. They just wanted to, I'm assuming save some money and not have a wall.
The actual reason it wasn't, I think they, they re, they, they, they took a look at the plan and just made a determination that was better to not have the retaining wall. Uh, I don't know if it was necessarily a cost issue, but.
No, well.
But moving the retaining wall has a definite impact. Um, this is the propos- this is the pro- this is the proposal overlaid on top of the existing plan. It's been marked up. You wanna see that? Um, so what you'll see, what's in white out is what was there before. So this is where the building was before, for, planned for, before. This is where the building was planned before. This was the retaining wall. I think this is, that's the original plan set that they had on file. Yeah.
So they're extending it out this way from here, you know, and they're moving this one.
Now they're shrinking.
Or shrinking it.
They're moving it.
Just shrinking it.
Just shrinking it, yeah, all right. So they're just taking it out.
Yeah.
I don't see any problems.
And then where's the dr- where's the main driveway?
Driveway comes in somewhere around here.
Right near, I thought.
Or is it way over here?
I think it must be way, yeah.
I'm almost thinking it is.
It's on the other side of that, uh, retention pond, right?
I think so. Gotta remember that. That's pretty.
Are there any houses over here?
That's one, uh, if memory serves me right, I think that's the last one before, before you get to Long Pond, uh, TCI's property.
I'm just curious if there's somebody's house right here. Now all of a sudden, they had, they had sixty feet and now they're gonna have, I don't know.
Well, wait a minute. I g- I gotta stop and think about it. This, this here, I believe, is the Mason's tree farm.
I think you're right.
Over here is down towards the.
That's what I thought too, that's Long Pond.
The Long Pond down this way, there is a house here.
So up here is.
This is, this is the Billy and Bobby Mason. And then the other four corner restaurant.
So there's, yeah, there's no houses there.
No, no. Over here.
Yeah, that's one comes around.
To the swale.
Oh, no, that's a swale in there. This is almost gotta be the driveway here. Gravel Drive, Gravel Drive.
Up in there, so then, yeah, so probably access to some of the building.
Yeah. Gravel, okay, gravel.
Oh, yeah, yeah, now I'm seeing it. And then I'll spread out and then go.
Okay. So, anything else?
I was just gonna say, this is before the board, because, uh, one of the conditions stated that any, uh, any changes to the plan should come back to the planning board for a determination, whether it's just a, a, a minor plan change or whether it needs a hearing, so.
I do not see why this would need a hearing.
I agree that it doesn't need a hearing.
Norm, for the sake of the minutes, would somebody mind just giving a quick overview of what the pro- proposed changes are? I looked in the packet, but I didn't see the email, so I was hoping maybe someone could let me know.
The email probably is the best way to put in the minutes, isn't it, Dave, with the changes? It's, it's gonna be tough to describe.
Yeah, yeah, it was on the updated packet. Um, I think the long and short of it is, is that two thirty-two, Barry Paxton Road. The applicant is proposing a plan change to two of the buildings that were previously approved under a special permit for a self-storage facility. Um, one of the buildings, and the reason for the changes is, is due to the elimination of the retaining wall and a swale. Uh, one building will be reduced from two hundred and ten feet to one ninety. And the other building will be, and that building will be moved, uh, on the site about thirty feet, uh, to the right. And a smaller building was one hundred and sixty feet and is now one hundred. It's gonna remain more or less in its prior position, except smaller. If that's sufficient, otherwise I can send you the email.
Nope, that's fine. Thank you.
So I guess our vote here would be to approve the changes.
As minor and not requiring a hearing.
Yeah.
Then I'll just write a letter and ask for him to make a revision on that plan referencing this decision.
Yeah.
Is that adequate?
And is this the final plan that includes parking and all that, or is that in this, I'm assuming?
That was previously approved.
Right, so that'll be shown in one of the plans anyways. And that doesn't change the parking, or maybe it gives it more parking.
It could give more.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
But the, the buildings are shrinking, correct, to overall dimensions?
Right.
Okay, then, from the stormwater thing, I don't think there's no need to send it back through, um, I'm having a brain death, Carl.
Yeah, less impervious area.
Yeah, that's why I was getting that norm. As long as it shrinks.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with not going back through Quinn. So, yeah, like you said, less impervious areas, so I don't have an issue. So, yeah, I think it's just a vote.
Someone wanna formulate their motions?
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed drawing, um, and there's no need for an additional hearing.
I think that's close enough.
Okay.
Any discussion? See people still looking, especially here. Oh, I'm all that.
I'm just trying.
Okay.
Existing, proposed.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, roll call, Tim.
Aye.
Uh, Kevin.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Norm.
Aye.
Okay.
The only thing, Dave, I guess, it has to, Norm, is that since it's proposed and we've approved it, get you an updated set of plans with, without this saying proposed on it, but actually.
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's the letter you're gonna send.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask for them to identify on the revision block, why the plan changed and tie that to this board's action today.
And you could give them our new set of required revisions, clouding.
Okay, we have another pre-application hearing, the twenty-sixth Maple Ave.
Is this pre or is this approval?
This is pre-application as well. The applicant has applied for a site plan review. The matter's been scheduled for a hearing on the June eighth. Um, unless that needs to be postponed for some reason, based upon what you see tonight, um, what the, the regulations call for a pre-application meeting on this as well. I have the full packet if you need it for some reason.
I'm just, I don't know what the board thinks, but to me, approved, next question.
Well, yeah.
Uh, I, I don't approve. I would like.
Ben?
I would like to see a, uh, a new complex.
Post office complex?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that doesn't anything to do with the sign. I like the sign. If they don't have a car.
No, I, I'd rather have a brand new complex, because this complex is too small.
As long as I get the bid on, I get the rent money, I'm good.
I'm not in that. I'm just wanting a new post office. Therefore, this sign is useless. There's already a sign on the end of the building. So why do they wanna sign them?
No, not our tax dollars paying for it, so I'm okay with that. It's not a hard time.
Uh, this is federal.
State dollars, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, it's federal. Not all the buildings were leased out.
Yeah, it's, it's private property.
It is private property.
And so whoever owns it leasing, it's paying for this sign. I don't know.
I don't know about that.
Well, anyhow, I like the sign. I think it's a, you can.
Oh, it, it, well, they're showing two places.
I'd like to, yeah, I don't understand the, I mean, did we get a color picture of this sign?
I don't understand what's, it's five feet wide by six feet high.
And to me, you know, they should've left the sticks in there and had us take a look at where, or the, the two pitches they had.
We don't have a color rendering, um, it was just black and white.
Did we have a picture of the sign at another post office somewhere? I was wondering where.
Did you have a, did you have a, uh?
Silver, is it white, is it blue, is it?
Next page on that is that.
It's painted like silver though, like.
For the field boards.
The Stanley Field sign.
The lawn, the front lawn or whatever.
Well, they call it out. It's saying that the.
Aluminum skirt painted to match.
It's saying that it's blue transparent for, uh.
Blue.
And then, um, white opaque vinyl for the, uh, letters. And then, uh, um, blue opaque for the, uh, around the bird, around the eagle, I should say, excuse me. And then the, the white, so everything, it looks like it's just blue and white. I don't see any red in here. It's just blue and white. Bristol blue, whatever that is. Bristol, Connecticut gets their own blue view.
Yeah, it seems like it's a standard post office logo with the, the blue and the white color scheme. Although, if you do want a sampler or a color copy, I can either ask the applicant to do that or buy something on my own. Yeah, it seems like it's a standard post office logo with the, the blue and the white color scheme, although if you do want a sampler or a color copy, I can either ask the applicant to do that or buy something on my own, but I don't want the color copies.
Still.
What a...
I'd like to see what it looks like, I mean, I guess for me, it is straight in the middle of a town, I just throw something up there, we don't, this is...
But what, what I'm getting at is when you're driving in and out, where it's located.
Well, as long as it's not over a sewer line like that.
Line of sight.
Line of sight for other people and then, I mean, the size of it is, it doesn't, it doesn't...
Like this one here seems too close, whereas this one, you know...
The one on the lower...
If it's set back, that's fine, but if you're trying to look down the road, you can see how you look down the road here and it's, it's not bad for looking down this one here.
Uh, I could just offer this as something I can see if the applicant would, would do is, is to put up some kind of stakes in the general location where the sign would go. And to give a, you know, give folks a better visual representation of it.
Correct. Listen, this one right here, the lower right-hand one, I'm good with it, right there, I can see coming out, I got car, the car on my car and car windshield will go out so I can see.
But if you're, uh, trucking, it's parked back a little bit of the, you know, an older person, you wanna stop, you know, five feet before you hit the intersection, are you gonna be able to see then?
Well, I mean...
You're not old.
The town sign is in the same almost exact position when you're pulling out from this one here.
Don't get me started.
Hey, 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 I'm just saying, we can't be, uh, we can't be selective if you can, if the town can do it, why can't the public do it?
Well, is this the public or is it...
It's not on town land right there.
Is this applicant, the applicant of the government or is the applicant...
The town trying to set us on land, so they're away from the owner. Who is the applicant?
The applicant.
Is the applicant that wants to put the sign up?
The applicant is the, is the post office with the permission of the private property owner.
So the Rattlin' Post Office is looking to put the sign up, and I'm just, again, I'm just wondering if it was from, you know, was it the federal government is asking that all these sign, you know what I mean, was this a...
We have no such representation as that.
We don't know why, you know, why they want, they just decided that they want it.
No, we don't have any representation of that, um, I don't know why they want the sign.
Well, it says right here, the sign is the smallest possible approved monument sign available for UPS, U.P., USPS restriction.
Yeah.
So there's obviously a, a spec from, uh, the United States Par- Postal Service.
And this is as small as they can make them, huh?
Yep.
Five feet by six feet.
No, I understand that, but the question is, is there a mandate? Is there anything, any correspondence that there's a mandate that the federal government wants to see the sign there? I don't have that information.
Oh.
We have the private prop- we have the, the post office coming forward looking to have a sign there. I don't know their exact reasons for it, if you would like me to...
I'm just curious, if it's, if it's, you know, the... I guess I've never had a problem finding the post office, I think everybody knows where it is, there's a lot of slow people in Rattlin' this day. Do you need to just put a sign, I don't know, it doesn't say Rattlin' Mass on it. It says Post Office one five four three, you know, the IZ code, our name on it, is there gonna be flowers around it? I don't know.
I think I'd just like to either see some much better photographs or, Dave says some stakes in the ground.
I mean, we asked, we asked the same thing for Spencer Savings Bank when they were putting that up to show us where it was gonna be, and they came back with that detail, if I'm not mistaken, and we did the same thing for the doc when she was putting up her sign. So I don't see why we should be not as requesting, I don't care if it's the US government, I wanna see the same thing we asked for other people in town.
That'd be a photographic rendering and stakes. I don't think that's unreasonable.
Well, I'd like to see a color card, I'm sure they've got, this is the, a standard out of, you know, we got three hundred and fifty-one in Massachusetts, I'm sure there's thousands out there, we can see a picture of it in front of a, um, in front of a post office.
Hey, Dave.
Yeah.
Okay, anything further?
Yeah, Dave, if you could ask the applicant, I mean, this is an autocad, I can see, if they've got a colored PDF, just send us the colored PDF of this autocad file, if they got it, and send it around.
And is this sign gonna be lit?
Yes, it's early illumination, yeah.
Says it in there, okay.
But it's not gonna be LED, so follows our bylaw, if I'm not mistaken.
Can do the LED.
No, no, I'm saying, we, we were, we're sort of a little restrictive on LED signs.
Wow, yeah.
But this is being lit, that sort of takes it to...
Yeah, yeah.
And this is gonna be internal with each sign face, you know, lighting inside of the sign face, not exposed lighting.
Correct, yeah, like that shining on.
But how bright?
How many lumens?
Well, I guess, you know, that's kind of another thing, on the, when we did up on sixty-eight, uh, we did put in a condition of dimming it.
Getting it, yeah.
After dark.
Yeah, at, at dock forty percent.
I've got a feeling looking at this thing, I don't think that's gonna be...
Any question would be, will this, will the sign have that capacity?
Big question, but... At the bylaw, some committee already, you haven't looked up the fine bylaw again, have you?
We're, we're getting close, we have, uh, incurred the, uh, curiosity of Frank Steiner, who's having a meeting today.
I don't think the word incurred is a good, good representation, but I'll let you go with that, Norm.
So, uh, he, he has, he definitely has some things to say about the sign bylaw.
Take it away from the plan board.
And, uh...
Heard that a lot.
We are gonna be getting to it. I, I don't even, I don't know if I wanna say pretty soon or not. Well, our, our progress through these things is, it is painful, painfully slow. And I think we covered, like, three pages of the bylaw today or something on that idea.
But, Dave, from my review in this, this sign conforms to everything in the bylaw.
I would have to take a little closer look at it. I do think they make a representation in this main packet.
But do they have the lumens in here?
I don't think our bylaw requires that, if I'm not mistaken.
They don't require lumens?
No.
I thought it did.
I, I believe that, you know, there's a, there is some language about, about, you know, not causing a, a light hazard.
Yeah, but it didn't give exact lumens in it, no, I...
Beyond that, no. Again, it's, it's been a while, but...
Yeah, I know, and that's, that's one reason why, uh, sometimes I kinda wish that actually it was dropped back into this place.
At that time, I don't think we knew enough about lumens.
No, but, but there again, I, I look at the doc's place, we're kinda long and...
Well, it took a little while, but they kinda took care of it.
Is there some difference between the internal and the external lit signs?
Yeah.
Yeah, Marilyn, 'cause this is basically gonna be buffered through pla- or through plastic.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I really, the ones I've seen before with the post office aren't bad, basically, just, there's my posting.
You know, there's...
The ones that are bad is when they have the, the wood post office ones, and they've got the external light shining up on it, off the white and reflecting back out.
Yeah. Okay, so...
What do we need to do with this? Do we just need to request the two things or three we've asked and, and come back in at the next and everything's good, we'll vote on it?
It's a pre-application meeting, so it's useful to gather comments that the board has, and I can then circulate back to the applicant.
Okay.
And, at least some guidance as to when we feel it's...
Yes.
Worthy for them to submit an application. I think it is.
Yes, and I, I think location and, and, and the sign itself, you know, the picture of the sign itself.
And we're gonna need more detailed plans about the, uh, the, the sign, what I mean, you know, all they're telling us is that it's a monument sign, the, the one up on sixty-eight, they, they even gave the materials for the mounting of it. You know, the size of the upright beams holding it.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, all, all of that kinda stuff.
Yeah, what you have here...
What they did here, they said, uh, uh, eighth, eighth or sixth, I forget my point, one, two, five, break form aluminum skirt painted to match, so they're telling us there's aluminum, um...
If I could just jump in real quick, so you only have part of the application, just enough to give a representation of what it's about? This is the actual application itself, it has more details.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we just didn't wanna overwhelm you with paperwork, so we do have this here, if you want me to circulate. I think that's gonna answer some of your questions as well.
Oh, okay.
You wanna take a quick look at it?
Oh, there's all the details right there, it's laying out.
Okay, one hundred and twenty volts, maximum amperage two, two point eight five amps. How's that?
I think that's less than your battery in your car.
And, I don't quite understand this one. Six fluorescent lamps.
Holy chamales, those energy wasters.
I was gonna say. No, no, one of the...
My guarantee is because this company is the only company that makes post offices.
Wow, that could be.
Here's the one we got, oh, it's got, this one which we can't see has the person, so it could show that it's not taller than a person.
It's got a, it's got a UL label on it.
Yeah. Oh, here's the basic design.
Okay, uh, this is...
I think, yeah, I definitely like the color photos, what they look like.
Concrete block.
Oh, this is better, this shows the locations, but I still, I like the stakeout thing. Yeah.
Okay, that's the driveway, yeah, right?
Block is the driveway right, right up in the ETS.
Oh, okay, there, it's the walkway.
On the park, yeah. So, I'm saying, this sign here would be better than this center, yeah.
Yeah, I like the one, Dick, that's closest to the walkway, 'cause it's back far enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That looks like it's almost like harling back.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
Yeah.
Healy Holdings, Webster, Mass, that's just doing the application, have to check into that.
Maybe we don't wanna pass that around.
Definitely, yes, please. There you go.
Uh...
Okay, we're on a gold, get out of here, buddy.
I'll buy that. Um, so once again, do we have a vote?
I'll move, I'll, uh, make a motion to...
Do we need additional?
Yeah, to gather additional information, but, uh, the planning board...
Generally...
Generally agrees with the, uh, concept.
Oh, okay.
That sounded good enough, eh?
That's fine, that's great, thank you.
Any discussion on that motion?
No, something like this, all the buzzes will be notified, a hearing, all that stuff.
They have them.
Oh, they already have them?
There's a whole list of them.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's because you've already scheduled them.
So this means that they have been notified, that's why.
Yeah, he's already scheduled them, yeah.
Three hundred foot of buzzers list.
I mean, the board's action, if you're really uncomfortable with it, you might request that they postpone, but it's been advertised for the next meeting.
Thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay. I think, I, yeah, I would say if they could have a color, just a color rendition, I think that other people would wanna see it too. And then, if you can pull in and out of there without blocking traffic, or, you know, the vision, the line of sight there, probably the number one thing.
I would rather have bring in a full-size markup so we can see it. It's okay, Dave, don't break that, you know.
It's right beside ya. Just open a draw and see it.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, Tim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
So with that, uh, Dave, you can now, uh, stamp them and send them.
I just have that question, keep track of it in the file, the application, oh, then we can use it to, yeah, thank you.
Probably should ask before we did that, has the, the three chiefs been looked at over as part of, uh, meeting? Have the fire, police, and DPW chiefs already gone over this, and Dave any comments?
We can circulate it to them, we don't normally circulate this type of project, but we can if you like.
Wouldn't be a bad idea.
I just, just because of that food bar out there, I wanna see everybody on board.
Sure, if that's what you like, yeah.
The only reason I want is I don't wanna find out there's a sewer line going in there, of Main Street, where the post office sign now is placed.
I can't say I've seen it, but I understand they do have the electric sign working.
Yeah, geez, I drove, I came back from, uh, Framingham today and it was running, had the nice Rattlin' logo.
Yeah, I'm getting scared.
Did they get the easement from the state?
Oh, so, oh, we just drill up the roads anyhow and put in...
There's at least one sign that needs to be moved, the sign says no true traffic coming in.
Oh, that little white one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gotta get a little...
Right in the way. Yeah, right in the way, and I, I feel that the crosswalks could be moved also.
How about higher height?
Uh, that too, yeah. Trying to catch your eyes.
All right.
Well, hey, if they ever have to wash the sign. Okay, Maple, uh, no, uh, uh, not, not, Maple Hill Estate subdivision.
Did we, you didn't have anything on that, did we?
Uh, nothing on that tonight, no.
All right. Uh, everything, I, I went in there and, uh, all houses are up, constructed and, and, and they're really getting close to being done.
Yeah.
Is there, the sidewalks still gotta go in, or is there any sidewalks that are gonna go in through the, call the stack? I don't, I can't remember, the, I don't think there's any sidewalks that go down that file though.
Could very well be, I, I don't know.
Yeah. But there were no sidewalks here, and that's the, the one thing that I, uh, noticed.
Okay, Bryce Lemon Estates subdivision, um...
We have an engineering report.
Yeah.
We do.
Yeah.
A couple.
Like I said, uh, thank goodness, uh, Carl went out there when he did.
Yeah.
Guess what would've happened?
It would've got filled up with, uh, silt and should've been unoperational inside a couple of years.
Yeah.
That, uh... I didn't have something, no.
That was in the supplement, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, wait, the, um, I think the regular memo for Bryce is in the regular package, and something else will have the other one, it's a theory, I don't really believe.
Okay, Bryce Lemon, I think, subdivision.
Yeah.
Anyway, I took a look at both, both ends of, uh, Bryce, uh, yeah, Bryce Lemon, yesterday, I think it was, I guess. Uh, not really a whole lot, uh, Phase Three, looks like they're just hauling in all kinds of materials, all kinds of pipe and that, that sort of thing.
Hmm, yeah.
One of the things is kinda interesting, they have cut the pavement in several places to run some kind of utilities.
Water or, or some kind.
Either water, sewer, electric, or something of that idea, which is gonna be interesting to see. Over time, what happens with that, with a million heavy trucks running over it.
Yeah.
All that kinda stuff.
Think crack and break.
Yeah. Uh, but outside of that, there, you know, no foundations being done or anything like that, it didn't always says drawn permits on it.
Yeah, they're getting ready to, yeah, um, I noticed the locker is still up there, his, his equipment is there, piles of logs are there, one pile of oaks is supposed to go to New York, and, and some's supposed to be firewood, and, uh, but he's working in, in, uh, at another job now.
Oh, yeah.
So, let me ask, Dave, Norm, this system that he just put in, this is the one that the pipe is gonna go over to the detention pond to solve the water inflow coming down off the hill, correct? 'Cause this is a big in-ground, so we're cool.
Um, this was on the original plan, this is not something new.
Okay, I'm missing it then, I'm not...
I'll tell you, I, I had to dig, I had to dig out the plans to even really figure out exactly where, where it is.
Where the block's at, you want it? Yeah, I've never seen it.
And basically, this infiltration thing empties into...
Detention pond?
The detention pond at its furthest end.
Oh, okay.
The real trail is down here between the bucket and that is where the real trail is, yeah.
So this is on the north side of the street?
This is the edge of the detention pond sitting over on this side here.
Yeah.
On the other side of this bank.
All the way over in this end.
Yeah. All right.
So I don't, I, I don't think that's gonna have anything to do with that, no.
I see. But we could suggestically that this would be a nice addition for the fix. Little big.
I don't know if it's in the right place or not, it could be.
Oh, no, no, I was saying another one of the... Oh, no, no, I was saying another one of these.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you'd love to do that.
Yeah, I'm sure he would.
All right, so. I'm assuming number one, he had, he had to get this in before he can clean out the detention ponds.
Yeah.
And finalize that, cause again, he's, as I said, he's looking for acceptance on the Phase Two, this wall.
Does he have more of these to build, more of these types of thing in the subdivision?
You know, for infiltration there?
Yeah.
I don't know.
All I was gonna suggest to the board is.
I would not doubt it.
In my engineering thing, to avoid issues that happen here, we use the word hole points for inspections. I think that would be a good thing, so we don't have to go, so, the next time around, if Carl doesn't make that exact date out there. That before, when he gets to this fabric thing, which is basically before he puts in the gravel and the, there should be a hold point for Carl to come out and bless it, that's my opinion.
Well, yeah, I could see that.
I don't know how he.
I'll tell you what bothered me more than anything, uh, on this one, when I looked at the plan. This whole thing is on one of the house lots. It is taking up at least fifty percent of the area of that house lot.
Well, it's gonna be over.
A lawn? It'll be a lawn, also a lawn, yeah, it'll be a lawn, but just the same.
And they wouldn't need to be fixed, that person's lawn's gonna get, so this is actually somebody's personal property?
Yeah.
So, you have a man, manhole covers here and a vent pipe.
Mm-hmm, that's gonna be in their backyard.
In their backyard.
And if he has access, if someone breaks, he's gonna get in there.
So, it should be, is there.
There's an easement getting there.
But the he will be, uh, Chief Buckley. Once that's accepted, correct? Or the homeowners association?
Homeowners.
Ooh, you got me on that one, ooh, payback. Better put some cash away for that, if I gotta fix it.
Yeah.
That's gonna be your fifty dollar fix.
Wow.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know, I just, I, I guess I, you know, as I was talking to Dave about this thing, you know, I, I, I would wanna know something like that before I bought a house lot. And I will bet whoever bought that.
No clue.
They don't have a clue.
Nope, I agree.
Or didn't, at least when they bought.
But it's in there now.
Wow.
As of twenty, when did he go there and saw this fabric that's just went in, right?
Yeah.
So, it was only a couple of weeks.
I'm not sure whether the house has been built on that yet or not.
See that?
Oh, there's a house right there.
This is like, this is ankle, this is a foot bone, this is a. This is a bone from a dinosaur.
So, yeah, I mean, how many of these are in there, is this a standard thing for these subdivisions?
Well, standard, no.
No.
It, it all depends on drainage and.
Yeah, whatever's needed.
For this on water management.
Yeah, when they did the design, they had to put this into, to basically adhere to stormwater management.
Yeah, 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 and, but every case is different, and there are all different ways of handling, so.
Wow. Right, Norm, can you imagine? Going, I'm gonna put a pool in the back of my yard, oh, you're right.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Boy, is that something, again, I'm asking those questions, is that something that you could put in there and ask, and ask him, you know, does the, at what point is it the planning board's place to look out for the homeowner? Are you crossing a line there, or are you saying, hey?
That's not our statement, it's, it's, it's not us, no.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the, the only thing is.
So, he buys a piece of property and all this, you know, the structures under there.
They're their lawyer, to make sure.
And that, that's where you have the title, and you've got a lawyer, and you've got people that you're paying, when you buy a piece of property, you should do the research. And know what's there, I mean.
The, the only, the only, I think sort of solution is, I think we can write into zoning bylaws about, uh, areas used for, let's say, this sort of thing, cannot be counted toward the lot area, so.
The lot counted, lot area?
So.
Only on that case, huh? Good.
Yeah, so is that part of the lot area, then you're.
That'd have to be added to our subdivision.
This person's paying, paying tax on infrastructure for the whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, this person's paying tax for all this stuff upon their land, that.
Mm.
Yeah. And, and then when the, it has to be fixed, the homeowners association has to come up with the, show me the money to fix it.
Right, for all the sod and the gravel and all that stuff.
To make it as nice as.
That thing gets clawed. Something's going to happen, maybe it's not, hopefully it's not ten years or twenty years or whatever, but something eventually is gonna happen there, and it might be two homeowners down the road. If there's no money, then the town has responsibility to go in there, repair it, and then charge the homeowner association.
Yep, which will get added to every homeowner in there that's part of the homeowners association.
Correct.
Now, it's not the planning board's obligation to let the homeowner know, or is the planning board's obligation to let the town know that we could be on the hook for some of this down the road? Well, that's when the plans were sent over to the DPW and they reviewed them, that should have been the time they should have asked, so.
Going full circle around.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody, you know, we just know.
We, we have, you were lucky enough, you were here early on when the, we had the homeowners in for the, the, the water issues on the property, it's really, we, how do you even put it, when we tried to help them, but it wasn't our responsibility, because lots aren't ours, it's the guy across the road. It's inspector, all we do is make sure the lot counts there, there's no issues with the road, and they're following the, uh, orders of condition on the subdivisions.
So, there's somebody, and again, it'll be a lawyer of the homeowner to look at all prints and drawings of that lot.
Yeah, that's what he's supposed to do, that's what he.
Right, so you're big all prints and drawings of the septic system, or this, or that, that entity should be in.
I'm sure they don't.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so are they looking into that, are they looking, so, okay. And also, I'm sure that, uh, that set, that system's on the D. I'm, I'm hoping that would be. Yeah, cause they'd have to define the easements on the D's if they did, but.
But now it was done correctly, up to spec.
Yeah.
Approved by Carl, it's been backfilled and.
And it's there.
Hopefully, we never, nobody in this room has to ever has to deal with it again, a four-year later, fifty years later, something like that.
Well, the, the thing is, it probably won't, because it isn't just holy water, the water comes in and there's a place for it to go out to.
Yeah, it's just filtering it basically, it's all, it's, it's stopping it from flowing like a White River Rapids, it's basically just.
So, it'll settle.
Yeah, it's causing retention time in the water, transfer from where it is over to the detention pond.
Unlikely in our lifetime.
Hmm, yeah.
During lifetimes.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of this are.
Yeah.
Getting for the, towards the end.
Okay, anything else on Bryce Lemon?
I, I. The only thing I, I have, and I'm gonna talk to the building instructor to make sure that he keeps track of it. I've gotta find out what, who the heck I heard that from, about the, um, people that come in, uh, and do foundations when they crack.
Oh, I just, I just, I just saw this lady in. Hupperton? It was just on that watch you chat that I joined, cause there actually some good information on there, that, that, uh, that compound that was used in concrete from Connecticut. She's having her whole foundation report.
Oh, yeah.
Because it, it's spalding and coming apart, and they said, they said potentials Berry, Hupperton, Holden, and I don't remember the other two towns, but they didn't mention Rutland. Doesn't mean it can't happen here.
What I'm saying is, because of all the fill that was put in there, you know.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry, I was.
So, settling, you know, after five, ten years of settling, you know, does the foundation crack or whatever happen, and then.
Brunel East and West, go look at those and tell me what you think.
Yeah, exactly.
Walls come apart.
It's too bad that when your E permitting system hasn't got a, a thing, that if you're gonna have any concrete work done on your foundation, you have to get a permit that would trigger. Because, to me, for kind of loud, uh, I, after listening to this fellow talk about how many sellers that he's doing, in this area, he's doing five different sellers. It could be Hupperton and, and, uh, but Rutland.
What was the repair work for the?
Yeah, but Rutland, he had two of them.
Oh, he did, yeah.
And his houses are all built in the last ten years? And, and, well, about ten or plus years, and not, not really old.
But he, but they said that this product goes all the way back to the nineties. Any house built in the nineties could be part of this.
It could be, could probably be.
Issue.
And all, but.
This is too different.
Yeah, they're too.
But, I, I'm talking about settling of, of the soils, you know, he's building it, you know, doing a lot of building up. And like I say, originally, uh, your foundation was supposed to go up to virgin soil, and now it doesn't. And to me, you know.
It can't completely compact it.
Yeah, I know, and, and to me, for kind of loud, how, how does the town keep a, a handle on it and say, hey, this is getting out of hand? We need to do something different.
There's beavers next to me going like, come on, baby, hurry up and get into the water, come on, house, slide into the water so I got a new house. I mean, those were built on what, thirty feet maybe of fill in there, twenty feet of fill? Because that was a drop-off, and then now it's at the driveway's level with fifty-six? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, I, I'm.
And I saw the stuff coming in there, I mean, it had chunks in it, so you're telling me that you put a foundation on chunked soil, good luck. That's the reason why I'm glad I got my house when I got it.
Anything else on Bryce? Britton Estates. I don't think we have anything on Britton Estates.
No, actually, what's number ten should be number eleven for Bear Hill, so that's correct.
Britton Estates, now it's up. I, uh, would like to speak to, because if we take a look at our special condition, and how many years ago it was, I know Neil Viner was on the planning board at the time. Um, it was for Mr. Blair to connect to the rail trail. Now, the two properties that Mr. Blair owned, he turned around and sold them to, or somehow they went to somebody else, and they in turn went to the Watchus Greenway. Does that still classify Mr. Blair owning up to the rail trail? Because it's the Watchus Greenway that take care of the rail trail? If so, I have an idea for Mr. Blair to pull out two houses on the cul-de-sac that, that heads over towards the rail trail, the small cul-de-sac, take two houses out, put two estate lots in, and drive the roads out to have five acres on one side and five acres on the other side, but further down, closer to the rail trail, and that way there you have the road to get to the rail trail.
But has he owned that property that?
He owns the property up until Watchus Greenway. Used to.
Watchus Greenway, they own the property of the rail trail or adjacent?
No, adjacent to the rail trail. And they take care of the rail trail.
Okay, so the question is, when he sold that property to him, did?
And at the time, we have it in the conditions, I believe, it should be in those conditions.
For Bear Hill too, right?
Not Bear Hill two, but no.
Britton Estates.
Correct.
Did he transfer that? That's a lawyer's question.
Yeah, since we.
I'm sure not. Sure they got lost and things.
Yeah.
Well, we should shortly be having him in to.
Yeah, cause we're still waiting, Norm, aren't we, for the updated plans?
Yeah.
I haven't seen those yet.
And, and, and a meeting to kind of refresh everything.
Yeah, yeah, from nineteen seventy-six.
That should definitely be a topic.
Okay.
When that happens.
All right.
Okay, Bear Hill two.
I, I wanted so desperately to get up there, because it's been a while since I've been up there, and, uh.
I didn't, I didn't watch anything, but I drove up there yesterday.
Come over to my house and see the excavator working.
Yeah, it, it looks like.
You could literally look up there and like, wow. That's a long fall if he goes off.
Moving dirt around, yeah.
Oh, and, and it's. Those houses facing Palmagussit?
Mm-hmm.
That's the back, that's the backyard.
Yeah.
It is correspondence on Bear Hill two.
Oh, that's right.
This number is ten.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Dave, looking at this, at this picture, looks like I could get the old truck out and drive this if I so choose.
None of her runs.
Oh, it's a mudder?
They, they started working, they had to stop several times, because it was so wet, they were just sinking.
Oh, so that excavator could slide off the edge and go down to my house.
Yeah.
Tell Clea, just inherit an excavator.
Right in the middle of Palmagussit Road on its side.
Oh, God, you imagine that mess? Well, it'd go through a couple houses before it got to my.
So, apparently, he is taking care of this, uh, staying on top of it.
So, they've cleared around and they're coming around.
Yeah, he, he seems to be, uh, spending more time even than usual on this.
Yes.
So, that's good, if that's unconcerned.
Uh, same here, and, and then, you know, the gravel and all that, that, I, I'm just hoping he's got a good eye on it.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Carl on that too, because i- if he starts putting the gravel basin in, up there, we really gotta hold it to our standard.
Yeah.
That, I mean, the water's been coming off that Bear Hill for a million years. Now, we've taken trees out, we've put houses in there, that's gonna be a mess, if it's not, if it's not properly drained.
Yeah.
I mean, Helly and Michelonis had almost, I mean, that was the reason why I hesitate to laugh at those people that are gonna do a thousand-foot driveway over off of Britnell. After ninety-nine, when, um, Mr. Helly and I talked about, uh, asphalting that road, and he said, be prepared to spend twenty grand every three to four years.
Yeah.
Come on, yeah, I think I'll find another house. Cause the water just hit such velocity that it was just eating everything up, so it's gotta be the same thing with this, although this is flat, you don't have the.
Although, yeah, there is wetlands up on the top.
Oh, behind.
And behind a, one of the houses up there, yes, there's a, a fair-sized wetland, so, it must be spring-fed, I would say, up hand, because of the, the, being as wet as it is up there. Probably maintaining the.
Yeah, cause, um, Michelonis as well was eight hundred feet.
I was gonna say six, eight hundred feet.
Yeah, it was eight hundred, and, and when, again, this is ninety-nine, so it's a couple decades ago, but it dried up, it failed after ten minutes. So, I was like, I'm moving on to another house. The answer was hydrofrack, it basically blasted, I'm like, I'm all set, so. Is Mr. Helly still living up there, or is that all that house?
I, I think they're both gone.
Okay. All right, I know Clea owned Michelonis' house, cause his sister, somebody was living up there. All right, so.
East County Rose sign permit.
Yes, signed the sign permit.
Yeah, and she sent out the, 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 like, email.
Yeah, I don't know if I reproduced it in the packet, I think I even have it on that.
Yeah, I don't think so. I read it in your email.
And.
I need to make copies I can.
What's, what's he, what's he, one eight seven?
That's the, just be on the bus company self-storage unit.
And you, you don't get the privilege of signing it. No, I'm just, is that the same self-storage unit that just, that they're talking about, Billy?
No, this is, this is another.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, okay, cool.
Should I make copies of it?
I don't know, I, I read it.
I did, I was gonna say, if Kevin can't sign it, is this the four, so it's super majority, so the four of us signing it makes it okay?
Exactly, site plan, so it's three.
Okay, cool.
Where are you, all signed with four numbers?
All right, just wanted to make sure.
I don't know.
The site plan for the sign?
Yeah. You read it?
No, I haven't read it, but I agree with what he said at the meeting.
Well, once again, uh. The detail that's going into these decisions at this point, if that's unconcerned, is incredible.
That's why the, the, the Fall Town Meeting, I guess I'll be the pain in the ass on the board, what David put in for work, and we need a little refinement on for our, um. What David put in for work and we need a little refinement on for our, um. Special permitting process, really like to get that ready to go for the Fall Town Meeting. Where we couldn't.
All the, the.
Tendencing of it maybe, really like to get that squared away, cause we have a lot of extra special permits, it just doesn't fit everything.
No doubt, no doubt, uh.
I think we can, what, schedule that over a bunch of meetings in the summertime?
Yeah, that's right.
Have a bunch of meetings on it and.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to have it maybe over to Wood Studio with the door wide open or out there in front of it.
Definitely not tomorrow, it's ninety-one. Or we could schedule a business meeting.
Yeah.
Like we were gonna do last year in that stupid fake virus. I gotta go to Trump for a team. The virus showed up.
Okay, um.
I was, I was okay with this, I, I read it before, so.
Yep.
Promotion to sign.
Second.
Is ready to session.
We have the original copy.
This is the original?
Hearing on roll call, Tim.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Norm, aye, and Kevin, Steve.
I'm aye.
Okay, master plan, phase two update.
Uh, you want me to give the members of the second assignment? I just have a couple of comments on that.
I've got feedback from constituents. They don't like our, I shouldn't say our, I'm on the master, on, they don't like the. I'm looking at her brain dead right now, the, uh. Online survey, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That was terrible. They, they seem to say that they don't folk, what are the comments I got from three people? Doesn't, it focuses on development and business that'll never happen in Rutland, that was the general comment. So I was just like, okay.
It was funneled, the whole view of that survey was funneled narrowly, not wide enough.
Yeah.
Maybe we can just hold that for a second and come back to how this survey came to be.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't have any, this were just comments, I just wanted to put it out to the planning board, that's the comments I got. And Dave, when we get to the meeting for the next master plan, I'll bring that up. That's the comments I got. Again, I, I didn't see it that way, but.
Oh, you were, you're on the master plan, so you know how this survey came to be.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, was fine, I, I didn't think of it. And I thought we, we did some of the questions, we actually tried to expand the questions, but.
Thanks.
That's fine.
Oh, boy. Still my name, huh?
Why don't you keep doing that?
You're killing me, I'll just make a correction here.
I, am I misplaced the H in the R?
Yeah, it's N-A-H-R. Germanic.
I guess I'm hearing it, sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 most people drop the H, but I've been consistent with that, haven't I? Yeah, you have, yeah.
Well, there's no need to say for consistent.
I guess, yeah.
That's okay, I'm fine. Most of the time it's, uh, it honestly, the way it's spelled there, the Germanic, the Germanic spelling is W-A-L-D, evolved. So what did my relatives try to do when they came to America? Must conceal we're German by changing the A to an O. You're freaking me out. Drop the H.
What, thanks, I'm just questioning the words.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, master plan.
Yeah, so we have, um, so we received funding for phase one, which is for four chapters. Where we've had discussion with the planning commission on funding for phase two, there are four chapters that are outstanding. Unfortunately, due to budget constraints at various levels. We're looking at applying for a grant for two of the four remaining chapters. And those would be the transportation and historic and cultural resources sections. And that would then leave for some other time, the services and facilities and natural resources chapters. So it's, it's better than none, it moves it a step further, it's kind of doing this in, in phases. So I just would assume that the phase three would be these last chapters. So that's an update, um, what this involves is a in-kind match from staff time. And a forty percent outlay from CMR PC, but it also involves, um. Twelve LPARs for FY twenty-three, which the planning board would need to authorize. Uh, which we, we usually accumulate the twenty from total hours. I guess this would be to authorize that in advance. So that that could, that's part of, that would be part of the budget for their time. So I guess we, we, we're looking to have the board authorize that and also have the board, us, the norm. Which we do have a template to, uh, to, uh, to sign a template letter in support of phase two master plan effort. I have a template, stop by tomorrow maybe.
Is that a request for. Funding for the phase two?
Yes, so this discussion was how to, how much fi- how much funding could be available for phase two? Because of limitations on the town side and the regional planning commission side, there's only funding for two of the remaining four chapters.
Two is better than nothing.
Two is better than nothing, so once again, we'll just keep, we'll just keep, um, you know, I mean, pushing, pushing along.
Is there, is there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What, didn't Holden have phases also in their master plan?
No, they did it in one shot, I think they got money from town meeting.
Yeah.
I think.
Now that's the time, right? Here's, here's your choice, Dave, either master plan or feed your family, that's the choice. I'm gonna go and feed your family.
So.
Do we need to authorize that tonight, the LP?
If, if the board could authorize the LPARs for twenty-three, FY twenty-three, twelve hours, that'd be good, cause I can report back to them.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, so it's, it's phase, uh, two, you said?
Phase two, and this will be for transportation and historic and cultural resources.
Transit.
And then the discussion, i- is there any opportunity for three and four in fiscal year twenty twenty-three?
Yeah.
Why don't we wait till we get closer to it?
Yes.
Well, we're already doing fiscal year twenty twenty-two's money, so.
Yeah, I know it. Because there might not be any money for twenty-three.
I just.
I mean, and the idea I, I proposed to the regional planning commission was. To see if we can use work as being done for the community compact, which is, involves a, a, a facility study. To use some of that as the basis of the master plan. And also see if maybe we have boards and commissions that might be able to help us out. I mean, we do have the text version of all these chapters, so it may, or may not be an involved manner, rather than just updating them.
Well, here's my proposal, this is for our infrastructure, correct? For the infrastructure of the town?
Uh, transportation. Uh, there might be some consideration for that, I think transportation is. Roads, alternative solutions, um.
What's three and four?
The remaining chapters?
Yeah.
Remaining chapters would be the facilities and natural resources.
Infrastructure of the town. Reason I'm going down that path is there's two point six million dollars sitting in the big guy's bucket over here. And the state's authorized that money to be used for infrastructure updates in the town. If that, if that study is part of the assistance in infrastructure.
I need a, I need my road fixed, I don't need to have a study.
So you're suggesting that, that money might be available?
Yeah.
Because what, what we don't, what we're not able to do is, is match, we're looking for a match that's beyond staff time. Any kind is a match, but not the total match necessary to get.
I'm just saying, David, it, it's an opportunity to put it out there and come up with a request for that. It's one point three this year and one point three million if I remember right, next year.
Does it involve studies as far as you know?
It, 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 it's not really defined, but what they have defined is it can be used for in- infrastructure. And revenue or, you know, loss of income from COVID. But infrastructure, infrastructure, you know, it doesn't really define what's considered for infrastructure.
I think one issue here is that this grant is due on the twenty-eighth. And that there's gonna be decisions that are gonna have to be made on that money from the federal government on how to allocate it, which would happen after the twenty-eighth. I'm not sure that that helps us here.
Okay.
Um. So we'll just keep, keep plugging away, I mean, you know, the rock can be moved a little bit at a time until the rock is up to hell and, you know.
Okay.
Anything further? Roll call, Tim.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Aye.
Dick, aye.
Norm, aye. Okay, uh, one item not on the agenda. Uh, and that, uh, has to do with our meetings. Uh, I don't think we talked about this last time, but. Uh, Peter Crane has secured. The select boards meeting room. Exclusively for regularly meeting boards. Select board, planning board, Hong Kong, bylaw committee. I think, I think that's really basically it. Okay, that thing is locked in for those boards to use.
Okay.
To the exclusion of everyone else. And those, nobody can, nobody else can come in there and if we wanna meet there, you know, whatever, Tuesday, nobody else can say, no, I've got it, they can't reserve, they cannot reserve. Okay. Um, the question is, where do we wanna meet? And. And I guess, you know, there's pros and cons to both. Once Zoom goes away. This is gonna get really kind of tricky because cable is gonna want to video us.
Why is Zoom going away? Why is Zoom going away?
Am I not being?
Well.
I was gonna say, you're giving everybody what the governor's thinking of doing.
Well, that's the thing.
Yeah.
Changes your open meeting law or extension of some of these things in perpetuity.
Oh, yeah.
Governor Baker's thinking about making it a constant.
So really? Just saying, as of, when, when was Zoom, I didn't realize, as of?
Was it June fifteenth, is it?
Yeah.
Is when the emergency act expired, expires. And at that point, in-person meetings are required.
Of the board?
Of the board.
But not of the public?
Um. That part, I don't know, but, um, um.
See, what, what I heard, what.
What Peter was saying is. Remote participation by a board member is still allowed, that was allowed before COVID.
Yeah, but the call-in, we can do that.
Okay, with the call-in. But the chairman or whoever is head on that particular board must be present, and I believe a quorum must be present.
Dave?
In the room.
Okay. I'm sorry, um.
Hi guys, can you hear me? It's Leah.
Yes.
Um, I think there was just communication out today that that, um, the June fifteenth was actually extended out to September. Because the governor and the legislator is looking at ways to revamp the open meeting law. Uh, considering, taking into consideration all of the COVID precautions that people have seemed to appreciate. Um, including remote meeting options and everything, so, um, we just got an email forwarded to us from, I think it came through from Ron's office. I'm not one hundred percent sure, but it seems like that date is, um, it pushed out a little bit farther.
Yeah, and I heard, Norm, through, uh, uh, the website I was reading, that the governor's considering, to what David started to say of the. Revamping the open meeting law to include Zoom in it. Permanently. And again, that was just a reading that I had.
Yeah.
And I was like, oh. Zoom's doing like this, yeah, more stock options, more stock options, yeah, right.
So if Zoom stays around.
You can still use the room over there because it's got cameras, correct?
Well, y- you know, like I say, pros and cons, pros and cons.
My pros is everything's sitting here.
I was gonna say, seeing the first time, it's gonna be easy for you to have to go over there every meeting. And then all of a sudden you got a question on something, you can't just.
That, that's definitely a con, we haven't been doing much of that. It, it seems lately, having to deep dig into these things.
Oh, but I have to make sure I have, this for this meeting, this for this meeting, this.
Yeah.
I really could use two computers over there, cause I'm using this for emails, in case anybody has the emails, I want to look up stuff.
Right.
And I'm using this for the meeting, so, I mean, there is, that's a pro, I guess, for the hair.
The other side, you know, some, some of the pros, obviously, it is a bigger room. There's more space, assuming that we are gonna get the public, you know, coming in at some point. Uh, cameras are all set up, mics are all set up, the sound quality will certainly be a whole bunch better. There is the big screen with the projector. So, uh, you know, even, even, you know, some of the plans that we were looking at here today. We put up on that, the eight by ten foot screen.
So do we have to have Peter there every time?
Cable will, it doesn't, it's not necessarily Peter, some.
Somebody, somebody asked me that.
Some of the cable will be there to record and broadcast there.
And that's the addition of costs?
Nope.
No.
No, cable's covered under it, they have their own monies. Town doesn't even pay for it, if I'm not mistaken, it's covered under the money that, uh, Spectrum gives them.
No, if we, if we had it in the other room, from the camera, can we have a camera sitting on top of the screen, like that camera right there?
Yeah, I would move this into the other room, hooking it up to the other hard drive in there, angle it this way. And just, I, we, we know that we can get to that screen from that computer. We know that this works like this, it plugs into here, it's just plug and play.
Yeah.
And we know you can seat about twelve people in there, plus the board, tight squeeze, not ideal for that, but.
But we have not had that. Then you might say, even with.
Be zoomed, that's to see if more people, they cover the meetings, but. I mean, what's your, do you have a preference, David?
I think both of these things have their pros and cons, I mean, if open meeting does get changed to allow this. Then you have the, the core board in there, you have some people coming in to present, and you have people probably gonna continue to do this. Why would you, why would you sit in an audience for a three hour meeting for one item? Well, you could just zoom in when you want to, you go about your business, the rest of it's the thing on, and you go when you.
Right, you can keep on knowing exactly.
You may not get a time where you have an overflow capacity, but we, we're using that room, for example. We had five or six people in at a given time, cause we actually had experience using that room before the COVID.
Yeah, cause we had the chairs set up in the back.
We did, so, it, it, it works.
I mean, I don't know how you wanna evaluate the pros and cons, maybe you wanna think about it a little bit and see if you got.
Yeah, well, we don't have to make a decision right away, but they, well, there, there are two things, number one. Uh, where these things are gonna be recorded and broadcast. There's no doubt that if we're in the select boards room, the quality of all of that will be much better. That, that's a guarantee. Okay, and I don't know, how much does that matter to everybody? I don't know.
Most of the people watching, that's just not gonna be.
You know, but it's.
We're all in the meeting, it's other people watching, you're even watching the rebroadcasts on YouTube or whatever.
Well, you know, it's even a question of, you know, okay, we have our mic here. But is it, is it working as well as, you know, would be wanted?
So your criteria is, is tech, that's the criteria?
Yeah.
Which has to be about a tech.
Yeah.
Uh, access to records, how much that is important or not. Um, ability for people to come in, this room versus that room. Do you have some subjective, objective criteria that could be brought into play? You just rate them. You know, um. Oh, I, I did talk to Peter about some of the logistics for staff, he indicates that he can make that room work. For example, the podium is currently where they plug in, but the podium is, is really practical when you stand, it's not practical when you sit.
Right.
He indicates that a table can be brought there, podium can be moved someplace else, so that staff can set up as you see how we, how we set up here. You know, I need a good chunk of space for the computer and the plan, so that's possible to be, um. You know, that's possible, that's probably a big one for me.
That would be in the other room?
Yeah, you can make it work so that there's enough space to set up.
Well, see, that's, that's the reason why I like, oh, and this is just my opinion, but I like here.
That's a con, right?
Yeah, cause I, we, I mean, just today, they was able to put the drawings out. That little U-shaped thing that the select board sits on, there's no room to put anything out. Then you gotta get up and walk around and a table.
There is now a table in there even.
Yeah.
And they, uh, let, let's look at it this way. Peter has taken over that room.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so, and I think he would be willing to set that room up. However, we would really need it within a reason.
Well, let me ask you this, can the.
You know, even, even two tables in there. The biggest, the biggest room, you know, two, two separate tables for different.
Well, can the, 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 the thing be pushed that way, and put tables so the board can sit at table level?
I think so.
That thing, whatever that thing is gonna be, just push it back.
Well, no, we've done a meeting there before, Dave, where, where we put tables next to each other, where we did the, the, the select board, the.
Oh, yeah, the combination.
Yeah, we need to have space for the audience, the public. I wonder if that dais thing can be pushed that way, and another table brought in front of it, so that everybody can.
You got some steel saws over here, please, right?
You, I got a nice cut-off saw, I can make.
Yeah, but then you're just, you're making more work for everybody to switch the room around every time we have a meeting, and then you gotta switch it back.
No, I don't think so, I don't think so.
Not a big deal.
I think you could just leave the table.
Yeah.
All the tables would stay there.
Yeah.
I, I thought every time we have a meeting, they arrange the.
I did, I think what, to Tim's point, the dais is not. Efficient if you want it with the big plans, but you can't.
No, it is.
What we do, it doesn't work for us, for the select board to just going through, you know, like this paper stuff to talk about, they don't have to bring up.
Have to use that part of the room.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, I'm okay with that then, I think that'd be great.
You know, big enough.
I am fine with that.
I guess, you know, the, the, the only other.
I think it's up to whatever works for you. You know.
Well, I think the board should come up with some objective criteria and grade the two solutions together. And whatever scores the highest, you go with. Although you, probably you're going in one direction already.
Well, you know, I.
Well, you've been meeting in here or there for how many years?
I see.
Not that long.
We've been meeting in every friggin' room. That's probably part of it, that's the best.
We were kicked out of there, that was our best room, we were originally over here, and still, it had to be remodeled.
Yeah.
You don't have a home, yeah.
Now. We're on short time here, because this is supposed to be completely demoed and turned into the new communications center.
Right.
That hasn't happened yet either. Wouldn't that happen? Thank God for COVID, I guess, that's the one plus that we can't save for that.
But kick out a fire truck and put it over in Fire Department number two.
Yeah.
On one twenty-two.
I got a better solution.
That's building it.
I, I, I would, I would lean towards the select board.
You can, I think you could talk me into that, as long as we don't have to sit at that dais, I'm good.
No, no, no.
So I like the cameras, they got the big screen, so we can.
It'd be nice to see those plans and all that, it's a huge difference, bigger table, bigger room.
TV over there.
It's a big TV.
Yeah, it is.
And it's really air-conditioned.
Yeah, that's true too.
The only other thing I'd be looking for is another computer. So that I'm not, so that I have this computer for resource if I need it, to look up maps or whatever, and we have the other computer, so.
How, how do we do that?
I don't know.
How do we get you a laptop?
This is it. This is the Chrome.
That is not a real laptop, I'm sorry.
The Chromebook.
It's a POS, and I'm not gonna explain what that is, but.
Point us out.
Yeah, thank you. What, what you need is a Dell version of that, so you can, so you.
Ideally, that is correct.
Peter is getting a brand-new laptop. And his old one was pretty fancy.
Is that a town one?
I don't think so, I don't know, but I know.
Was that Tamika?
She was, I, I.
That was me, I apologize, I shouldn't mean to do the clapping hands, just the raising hands. Um, I was just gonna say that Peter typically uses his, um, laptop anyways in that room. So I'm sure he would allow you to use that second one, um, and if not, I have a town-issued, um, Dell laptop. That I can bring to meetings if, if Dave would like to use that.
That would, that would probably work, because I can run the meeting on the Dell, and I can have this meeting, it's on the computer for resource, emails and what have you.
Sure, I can get.
We have, we have access to another computer.
Okay, then I'll just plan on bringing that with me when I come to meetings, so you'll have the second computer.
Do, do you have a desktop, is that what they've got you?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the other side.
I have no problem writing a letter to the town administrator, saying that because of the mobility of our town planner, it would make much more sense. For him to have a laptop and a docking station that he can plug all that into.
Instead of, uh, Chromebook.
I don't think you're gonna go into Chromebook, because you're stuck with that, but having a Chromebook and a laptop would be an advantage. Chromebook for whatever the company with their Google Docs thing, and then the laptop, so if you've gotta have any, uh, Words, you know, Microsoft Word or anything like that, you could use it. And if you're going out to the field where you've gotta pull up email or anything like that with a client, you've got a laptop there. And most of them have three to four hour batteries, so you got a half-day in the field.
Wow, you're walking the field.
Yeah, well. I shouldn't say that, cuz I'm having flashbacks myself, and I don't.
What are we talking about for money?
No more than two grand. I mean, you can get it less.
I don't really do a whole lot, I mean, most of what I need.
Actually, it's probably cheaper, because you, doesn't the town have some type of deal with Dell for, as a government contract?
Yeah, you don't pay tax, and you get a very narrow discount.
Okay.
Not, what I need to do, I can do here, it's really the function where in the meetings, it's not that we have a solution. I just have to be able to get the packet to that computer. Now, so, to make, if I make revisions late. How do I get the packet to this Dell you're talking about? And email it to you?
Yeah, if you just email it, and then I can just leave my email up, and you can access it that way.
Or, hold on a second, does the town have a network drive that both Tamika and Dave are accessible to, what I call a sandbox? That you can put stuff in, Dave, and then Tamika could pull it out from the network drive, because she's hooked in.
I wouldn't even need to, I could just put it into the network area when I get to the library, I, I do my changes here, my final changes, I put it up. And I access it from that, that common drive.
I call it a sandbox, that's what we used to call it.
A common drive.
Yeah, common drive.
From the library.
Yep.
I'd have to look into that with, um, the IT provider.
Okay, that way, if, if Tamika had something, or you had something, go into a common box, and then, or common drive, and then you could pull it out anywhere, wherever you're at.
That would be the way to do it, because I'm often making changes to a very end of some distance. Okay, yeah, yeah, the common drive.
Or with the, uh, the COVID money, maybe we just need to buy a, I mean, I mean, we bought everything from refrigerators to, to sandwiches, why can't we buy you a, uh, laptop? Out of the COVID money, just saying.
As a note, that's how they paid for mine.
Do I need to say anymore?
I'm not trying to cause any trouble.
That's what I do, I am. So. I'm, I'm, I'm going to, through the chairman, do you need some help discussing it with the town administrator, how we're getting Dave a laptop? Out of the COVID money, cuz.
I'll let you try it.
Okay. Bring my good buddy Vinnie with me, there you go.
As a new vice chairman, uh, that can be, that can be your first task.
All right, I'm bringing aside Tom, my chairman with me too.
So the board has consensus that the place to be is there, starting on what, on the second meeting?
You're okay with it, and everybody's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Starting in the second meeting, you can, starting in the second meeting, you can. Town is behind you.
Yeah, one of this, you know, whatever. Oh, that's right, cuz you've already posted the hearings.
Twenty eighth.
Yeah, so. Cuz Peter said it is available now.
All right.
It could have been there tonight. But.
I have one thing to bring up, when everybody.
I couldn't, I'll have to remember to place the ads correctly.
Yeah. Well, yeah, a lot of that's been changed.
Thought ahead.
What to bring with us?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to go through, uh, Bretton and, and find out about, you know, the conditions that were there.
Well, that is my unanticipated question, that I just thought about as I was sitting here. And I don't know if David has the answer to that, but we've got this. We've got, uh, this. And, um, I, I remember telling Mr. Blair, you got two years to get these going, and then that's it, this is the second or third renewal of your special permit, and I'm done. It's, it's rescission time. That's my, what I wanted to bring up. I, I don't know the dates yet. I'd have to, David, I'd somehow, we'd have to figure out when that extension was given. For two years for McAllister, Noble Hill, and I think those are the only ones that come to mind right now to look, but. We've given a couple of extensions on the special permits, and I'm done. Hasn't been started. Uh, sorry, you're gonna have to resubmit, start over. We, we, you've gone through the. Um, I'm having a brain death with our governor, uh. Deval Patrick's extension, because of the financial crisis of two thousand eight. That gave him a couple of years, and we give two or three. And I remember saying, you got till April or May of twenty twenty-one to do something. Well, it's here. So, but I wanted to check to make sure I'm right.
And, no, that, some of the, uh, regulations have been changed, therefore.
That's what I'm getting at, I guess.
Therefore, we have to.
That's what I'm getting at, it's not a, it's not a vindictive thing, you, you've had them on the books for ten years. I think the party's over. If you haven't started them, time to take them off and, and resubmit. I know that George is gonna immediately be.
Well, there, there's, there's. At least a little bit of a problem there. Cuz we can talk about the special permit expiring. But not the subdivision plan.
Well, the sub, the special permit is an open space.
Yeah. But the subdivision plan itself is forever.
It's two different statutes.
Was, was McAllister ever?
It was never finalized.
Was never finalized, it was only like three or four lots for the whole thing, I thought.
He never, I thought McAllister never came in with a definitive plan.
Yeah.
I believe it did.
Okay.
Milliken Brook never did.
Milliken Brook.
That's probably another one I forgot about.
Yeah.
I just, i- i- it's, so you're telling me you can never rescind a subdivision plan?
They operate from two different statutes. One operates under the zoning act, the special permit, the other one operates under the subdivision control act. In the ordinary case. Well, so the operation of the statute and the zoning act for a special permit indicates that the special permit is good for two years.
Yeah.
Unless work is commenced. Or unless work is commenced, then the special permit has been exercised, and it does not expire, because work is started on a timely basis. If work doesn't start on a timely basis, the special permit may be continued for good reason from time to time.
Correct, yeah.
Um, under eighty-one, for the subdivision. There's no expiration for a special, for a definitive subdivision plan, unless otherwise stated and worked into the condition intentionally. But on its own, on its own, on its own, under the statute, it doesn't call for an expiration, the same way that the zoning act calls for an expiration for the special permit.
Can you do a rescission to a subdivision plan? By the planning board?
I, I think you need to have a reason for.
Yeah, based on what?
You have to have a good reason for rescission.
Sunny Hill.
I, I mean, Bretton Estates was issued in nineteen seventy-six, and now gets built? The, the, my, my personal reason is subdivision bylaws have changed, or subdivision rules have changed. Therefore, you had an opportunity to build it, you waited five years, or six years, or ten years, didn't build it? Rules have changed, we want it rescinded, and we want you to build it correctly with the new regs.
Correct.
That's, I guess that's my, that's my argument.
And that's what I always remember, you know, once you change the rules and regulations, it has to be abide by any.
And I was no problem when these came in just before we changed the regs, okay, great, you're gonna build them in three or four years, we have some control. But that was, that was ten or more years ago.
Oh, yeah, no, I, you know, I, I can't, I can't argue that far.
So I, I'm just.
Only part is the legal part.
That's where, that's where Norm, I definitely need KP Law to come in and say.
I just wanna say, let's find out from KP, or, you know.
The, the special permit is easy, because that's, I, I read that enough that I know, it's two years, you can give extensions as many as you want. But it's gotta be every two years you give extensions.
Unless work has commenced on a timely basis. And the threshold for that decision is a very low bar. What constitutes work?
Take a shovel and turn over a shovel or two.
Well, you know, again, I'll let George fight that out in court, cuz I, I, I'm, I'm tired of this, you know. Noble Hill, McAllister, um, you know, they've been sitting on the books. I'm, me personally, I'm not gonna live with what happened in Bretton Estates, even Bryce Lemon. That thing, that thing went forever before it happened, and it went through a complete revision. Probably shouldn't have happened, it did, understand, but I, I, and I mentioned this multiple times on the board, I'm done. You, you've had extensions, you're not doing it, I get it, there's building, building crisis right now with, with COVID, but I'm sorry. I mean, I'll let the rest of the board what they think, but I just wanted to bring it up now, that, uh, we need to check in and find out if those special permits are at their two-year.
Yeah.
And if they are, and I thought it was April or May, that's the reason why I wanna bring it up now.
Judges, I know, I know. I, I can't get through my thick head, what becomes of the status of the definitive plan without the special permit?
It's usually.
You need both. You need both.
You need, you need both.
And without one, you can't have the other. Because if it's an open space subdivision, the lots shown on the plan are the reduced-size lots based upon the open space provision. But it's a special permit that gives authorization to build on those lots.
I know that.
So you've just basically cut the. They'd have to redo the plan to be a standard plan.
What a standard lot size.
So the plan would be.
The alternative would be they can apply for a special permit.
Correct, that would be correct, update the special permits, they just reapply for a.
Don't we get to go through the subdivision plan and?
I'm not sure it opens up the subdivision again, I think it just refreshes the special permit, but the special, see, the subdivision's been approved. And the special, the subdivision doesn't have, see, you have two different tracks.
Yeah.
Track one, and they're largely, they're connected but not connected. You can't use the special permit to reopen the subdivision. Subdivision's already been approved, what's left is the special permit. So the special permit, it would simply be a matter of, this is what I applied, well, before I applied for again, you practically have to grant it, because you granted it the last time.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean, if you haven't changed the bylaw.
Materialally, yeah.
The special permit.
And I guess I'll go to the. Bylaws change, no rules or regulations.
Oh, yeah, yes, our subdivision rules have changed, so wouldn't that be.
Subdivision rules have changed, but not, but not special open space special permit.
Not the zoning aspect of the open space.
Well, there may be areas, for parent allowed, where what was taken. How it was written was not done right.
I get a lawyer on, on it.
And, and that's, I guess, what I'm getting at to the board, I really. I, I, I see what you're saying on the special permit, but then I'm more of on the radical side, saying, great, then let's rescind the subdivision. And that's where it's gonna take a, a discussion with the attorney.
Well, it has to be a reason to rescind the subdivision.
Real easy, subdivision bylaws, the subdivision regs have changed. They've changed in the last fourteen years.
I think it's a higher standard.
I, I think I'd want a, I, I'd want Amy from KP to let us know. Our stance, how we, how we stand on some of our subdivisions that are.
Yeah, I just tell her they were approved back in oh-eight, oh-seven. Do we have any stance on rescinding them and making them come up to the latest subdivision? Uh, I don't know, I just, I don't want these on the books for twenty frickin' years. Cuz then we get stuck with that, that cul-de-sac over on Pomit, or on, uh, one twenty-two A. That we, I didn't even know about, I mean, it went on the books, what, the Cleese little cul-de-sac that he ended up not building, and putting those houses on?
Oh, yeah.
Because that was an approved, quote, subdivision. It was from nineteen eighty-two? I mean, give me a break.
Yeah.
I just, I don't buy leaving stuff on the books that long, that's my opinion, let the board go.
Hey, thanks a lot.
Sorry. Did I call you? Oh, man, that happens when you get, get, uh, fingers that are rolling.
So to say, to say this is not a pressing item, needs to be dealt immediately?
No.
I think it has to be dealt with within the next, uh, meeting or two.
I, it's, it's more of finding out, are we at that point where the?
Well, we know that Noble Hill.
It's finding out, excuse me.
Go ahead.
It's finding out where the point is and what we can do about it.
Yeah.
I mean, I can tell you one thing, uh, the attorney is gonna not make a decision, she'll make a decision, but the more information she gets, the better the decision. I'm gonna have to get her stuff. I'm gonna have to get her the relevant decisions, whether or not workers commence, engineering reports to verify that no workers commence, and I'm gonna have to give her a lot of information for her to give. It's not, it may be apparently a simple question asked, but she needs information to judge, maybe, maybe give her a decision.
Why, yeah, so what are the, what are the regulations that have changed in the last twenty years or something?
If that's the case, if your, if your theory is that it could be rescinded for some reason, but I think we need to ask the question, can it be rescinded for this reason? And I just don't understand what kind of regulation changes have happened in the meantime, I gotta put together, you know, like a brief with bullet points and supporting information, then you should look at it.
So the hope is from Cle that we never do that, and they just stay on the books for thirty years?
Well, I'm not saying they should not come off the books.
I don't buy it.
I'm just telling you that it's, it's a serious question to be asked, because it has consequences, depending on how it plays out. You probably would like to get the answer answered well.
Do my own research too.
And that would.
I'm gonna find out what rescinds, because this town's talked about it, I don't know, if we ever rescinded, again, I'm aware of it on the board, it hasn't. Has this town ever rescinded a subdivision plan?
Bretton, huh? Didn't we do, redo Bretton?
What did we do?
I mean, if it hasn't been done, I, I hate being a trendsetter, so.
It's not a common practice necessarily, because usually.
They build them out, they don't leave them on the books for twenty years, do they?
I don't think so. I think I'm on the book system, I don't, I don't think.
No, no, I didn't know that either.
So.
Yeah.
It seems to me that you've asked more of a general question.
Beyond Bryce Lemon.
You know, so we've bought these, some of these, some of them back, ask number of years.
Yeah, now it's a problem.
Are anything that we can do with them?
I could.
I like you guys about it, I mean, so we, we minimize her, her cost. But.
They applied for it.
In, in a general term, I think, a good number is minimum twelve years, because I remember oh eight is, is when a lot of these got approved. So with twelve year subdivisions, that are on the book, like I say, they sue us, is, is there any practice of rescinding them? And if, and if she says, I need more information, then that's gonna prove what we have to do.
Is there any reason, is there any way to rescind them, because of changes and what?
File the secretary.
Yeah.
I guess, we could do that, I, I can guarantee that she'll probably have a bunch of caveats, these are funny information provided, this is what I have to tell you, change depends on various factors. But you can get a very general answer, it might be vague, but in general, there's a funny general question, so that's what.
I, I, I mean, I just, I'm not an attorney, can we do this, or can we not? If it's never been done in Raleigh before, I, maybe we better look into this before we go down the path, because George is really good. And I don't wanna face him going in half cock, so.
There again, I would, would like to be ready, you know, I, I'd like to have all the answers and.
But if she comes back and says, no, you know, a, uh, plan is good forever and ever.
The plan is good forever, but, you know, a special permit can be changed, just do that.
Well, the flip side is when you come back from a special permit, you put a lot of conditions on those, as long as they're justified.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you can, yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
I don't know, I, again, i- i- it's not that I wanna limit building or anything like that, I just, keeping three of these on the books with two, you know, let's say two hundred houses, is sort of crazy for me for twelve years or thirteen years, just.
Car gets four hundred mile, thousand miles on it, and it's all going to rust, it's time to get rid of it.
I liked that a lot.
I liked four hundred thousand miles.
Yeah. I got two sixty, and I thought I was impressed with the American car. All right, that's what I wanted to bring up, I know it's getting time, and I told Cle that we give him another two years to get started, and maybe he is, maybe he started on Noble Hill, because I remember him talking about.
Yeah, he talked about Concom as getting started.
I'm fine with that, I just wanna get it moving.
What'd you say about Concom?
He was, he was doing something with Concom on Noble Hill.
Because it was flooded, he had to move, move things around, because the Seabird dam and.
And he also supplied, he, it's, it's in a minute, he applied for something.
Yeah.
He hasn't done anything with Concom yet for that, we haven't seen, we haven't seen anything yet.
With, uh, the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers.
I think, that kind of thing. Okay. I'll work that one to death.
Niker is the secretary of line of our board, so she can give us information.
Do we have, is there anything else to come before the board?
Anybody in the public?
I don't see any.
All right.
You have four people in this meeting right now.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Tim.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
We are adjourned.